Recording in progress. And we are going to start with a special meeting at 6:00 PM, which is a study session to consider planning for reopening city council meetings and other public meetings of city committees, commissions for in-person attendance and potential alternative meeting formats. We'll be receiving an update from the city manager regarding considerations for evaluation of safe return to in-person public meetings and adjustments due to COVID-19 impact and potential alternative meeting formats or options. City manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Potembeer, and city council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. And I'll kick this off while city clerk Sarah Coffey brings up the presentation that we'll be running through. We have quite a bit of detail to provide. Really, the purpose of this is this initial conversation and presentation about research that we've done about the future of city council meetings as we move towards a complete reopening post-COVID. And you'll see that the the options are complex. I mean, they range from very complex to more simple as pre-COVID meetings were. And this is an initial conversation, so there will undoubtedly be more research required based on council members' direction. We're not necessarily asking for any any decisions or specific consensus tonight, but if there is some, you'll see at the end of the presentation, a slide that will help guide that conversation. I want to start by thanking city clerk Coffey and executive assistant deputy city clerk Elizabeth Brooks, and a whole team of employees that dug into this issue, including Tommy Yu, our IST manager, collaboration and work with Pacific Coast TV, because they're a key player in our technology capabilities for council meetings. And, you know, just reflect that this has been an interesting year journey that we've been on in sort of transitioning to an entirely virtual setting for all of our council and public meetings. And I remember at the beginning of that, it was it was uncertain how that was going to play out. But now it seems that there's been a growing comfort with Zoom or virtual setting for some members of the public and for for city staff and council members, but but maybe not so much for others. So it's important to start this conversation and as we carefully evaluate the the information in leading up to what what might come post-COVID. So with with that introduction, I will turn it over to city clerk Coffey to provide the presentation.
Good evening, council members and members of the public joining us. My name is Sarah Coffey. I'm the city clerk, and I will be going through some of the considerations for our meeting format that we have had in during the COVID times and the transition to back to in-person meetings and the meeting formats. So I'd like to lay out the order of the agenda for the study session for tonight and our considerations. We'll first go through discussing public meetings pre-COVID, just as a reminder for what our meetings looked like before we went into this over-year-long adjusted adjusted period of meetings with COVID. And then we'll discuss the the Brown Act for open meetings and adjustments that were made to the Brown Act due to COVID-19 under the governor's orders. We'll discuss returning to in-person meetings and various meeting format options for the return to in-person meetings. And then several factors to consider in evaluating meaning the meeting format options that we'll be looking at tonight. I will also have a little bit of information about the civic center relocation and the restoration of operations plan, otherwise known as the RUP. So pre-COVID, our public meetings were held all in person. And the city council and city commission and committee meetings were all held in person. Regular meetings of the city council and planning commission are televised live by Pacific Coast TV on local channel 26. They're still televised live as well and and livestreamed. So this has been occurring during COVID while we've been on Zoom. And those meetings were also televised and livestreamed, not via Zoom, but via the city website and PCTV's website prior to COVID. And the recordings of the city council meetings and the planning commission meetings are available afterwards on YouTube. Public comments were received in person at the meeting. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item on the agenda or during oral communications would submit a yellow speaker card. For planning commission, orange cards were used, but they would complete a speaker card indicating what item on the agenda they would like to speak on or indicating oral communications if they'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda. The written comments were also received either by letter or by email before or at the meeting. Sometimes members of the public would present items for distribution to the council at the meeting itself. There was occasional participation via teleconference by a single council or commission member, and that was subject to pre-arrangement because it needed to be in compliance with with the Brown Act and noticing and public access requirements. So teleconferencing was intended to be and expected to be an out-of-the-ordinary occurrence. This was for the purpose, if, you know, a member was was not able to make it in person to the meeting and was able to pre-arrange the location from which they would be teleconferencing, and we'll discuss that a little bit more. So it wasn't just, you know, driving on in the car and not able to make it in time for the meeting, and I'm just going to teleconference in until I can get there kind of thing. It was subject to pre-arrangement. Public meetings pre-COVID were held in various meeting venues. So the regular meetings held in city council chambers were the city council, the planning commission, and the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission all held their regular meetings at city council chambers. Meetings regularly held in other city facilities were the beautification advisory committee, which held their meetings in the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Conference Room or the planning conference room. And and I believe sometimes held meetings in the office at the corporation yard. The Economic Development Committee regularly met at the police department in the emergency operations center conference room. Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission regularly met in the small conference room at the police department. And that meeting typically occurred on the same night as Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, which also occurred at the police department, but in the larger Emergency Operations Center Conference Room. The Library Advisory Committee typically held their meetings alternating between the two branches of the Pacifica Library. There were occasional changes of location in order to accommodate larger audiences. So, for instance, at the end of 2019 or beginning of 2020, I believe that the city council held a council meeting at the community center in the large auditorium there in order to accommodate a larger audience. So the meeting venues will be an important factor to consider as we consider meeting formats going forward as well. I'd like to talk a little bit about the Brown Act, and the Brown Act is the government code which pertains to meetings of public bodies that must be open and public. So this is for transparency and that, you know, the pub, the meetings are subject to the public and government meetings are the public's business. The Brown Act requires that the meetings be held in the jurisdiction of the public body and in places accessible to the public. And that the public has the right to address the public body at any meeting. There were specific limitations regarding teleconferencing under the Brown Act. So ordinarily, under the Brown Act, every teleconferencing location must be accessible to the public. And each location, teleconference location must provide the public the opportunity to address the body directly from that location. So this is why the teleconferencing locations, if there was a single member of the body that is participating by teleconference, needed to be needed to be listed in the agenda. At least a quorum of the members must participate from a location within the jurisdiction. And each teleconferencing location, like I said, must be identified in the notice and the agenda of the meeting, and the agendas must be posted at each of the teleconferencing locations. So there's a number of requirements that around teleconferencing that provided some limitations so that it wasn't just something that you would do last minute or just for the convenience of a member. With COVID-19, the governor issued executive orders N2520 and N2920, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act to allow for meetings to be held via teleconference, and that includes video conference such as Zoom for all members to participate from remote locations. So this relaxed several provisions of the Brown Act in order to allow for these meetings to occur 100% remotely and virtually and not have a physical location open to the public. And also to allow for those members that are joining us, like tonight, all of the council members are joining from remote locations, and that those locations don't need to have the notice or agenda posted and do not need to be open and accessible directly by the public to address the body. The public is able to join these meetings via Zoom directly or watch the meetings that are televised on channel 26 or livestreamed. And public comments are entertained directly via Zoom audio. So we're all anticipating June 15th, where we know that the governor is anticipated to take some actions that may impact the provisions of the Brown Act. So that will be exactly what that is will be determined when and whether the governor is going to change the executive orders that have relaxed these provisions of the Brown Act to allow these virtual meetings to take place. There's a few pending bills that propose amendments to the Brown Act. So we are watching the proposed legislation by Assembly Bill 361, which is proposing to extend executive, the governor's executive order and dash 29 dash 20 provisions during a proclaimed emergency. There's Assembly Bill 339, which is currently under consideration in the assembly. And this provides that all meetings of a city council or county board of supervisors within jurisdictions with at least 250,000 people include the opportunity for public to attend via telephonic or internet-based service options such as Zoom. Assembly Bill 703 would remove noticing requirements, particular to teleconferencing, and revise the Brown Act to allow for teleconference, teleconferencing provided that the public be allowed to observe the meeting and address legislative body both in person and remotely, either via call-in or by internet-based service option such as Zoom. So given given that and looking forward to a return to in-person meetings, there's a few meeting format options that the council may wish to consider. Option one is to return to in-person meetings similar to pre-COVID. And and the advantage of doing that is that it's a low cost point. It's fairly turnkey. We would need to consider provisions such as limited capacity and or distancing requirements that may be in place at the time that those meetings return to in-person. It could necessitate some changes in venues to allow for greater capacity or or physical distancing if needed. So if some of the locations where, such as the small conference room at the police department where the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission often meets, if that is too small to accommodate the the commission members as well as the public, then a meeting venue may be in order in order to accommodate in in-person meeting. Option two is in person is in-person meetings with call-in public comments. So this option, we discussed briefly with Pacific Coast TV. It includes an additional Pacific Coast TV component. They are experienced in call-in comments and when they do events such as their live auctions, and they have a a call queue that they manage and can patch in the caller to to provide public comment during a meeting such as a city council meeting. This option would require further evaluation. We would need to discuss more of the logistics and the details with Pacific Coast TV. It would require some additional staffing by either Pacific Coast TV or consideration of how to manage a call-in public comment option if PCTV is not a component of that type of meeting. The advantage to option number two with call-in public comments is it's a low cost point. It does provide an additional avenue for receiving live public comments during the meetings. And it is an easy access option for seniors and residents without internet and those that are less tech savvy. Option number three is what we are hearing as the hybrid meeting option, and this entails in-person meetings together with a Zoom component, a live Zoom component for public participation and comments. So similar to the meeting format that we're doing tonight, but there would be an in-person component as well. And this this one would require significant initial expenses and additional ongoing expenses. It requires additional staffing and requires further evaluation at the meetings for feasibility, expense quantification, and testing. So it's it's quite a bit more complicated than just doing a meeting via Zoom. There's there's technical requirements that need to be considered for the meeting locations to be enabled to provide for as in-person plus Zoom format. And we had some significant discussions and research with Pacific Coast TV where there would need to be further equipment purchased and make sure that the bandwidth at the meeting location is able to support the added Zoom component. So there's technology dependencies that impose additional risk for this meeting option and limitations. If a policy is put in place that requires a Zoom component with the in-person meetings, then one would need to consider what would happen if, for instance, the the internet is down or there's issues with the bandwidth that evening for that meeting, or if the Zoom platform, for instance, is down. Would that require a cancellation of that meeting or early adjournment of the meeting? And that could have some downstream impacts to the meeting scheduling and items that that need to be discussed and approved. So those are the three meeting option formats that we're bringing tonight for discussion. And I discussed some of the factors to consider in evaluating the meeting formats. Just to keep in mind that there's several factors that need to be considered in evaluating the meeting formats and which which would be the best option going forward. But the the overall goal to keep in mind is that we want to have open and public meetings, and we want to provide the public a means to observe and participate in all of our open and public meetings. So that's the overarching goal. With that overarching goal, we want to consider public accessibility and participation. Is that meeting format enabling accessibility? Is it an equitable option? We also need to consider legal requirements and restrictions. There's some pending legislation that I discussed just a little bit ago, and we'll be watching that to see if that if that changes any requirements for our meeting formats. Cost to implement the features is an important consideration as well. In initial discussions with IT department and with Pacific Coast TV in order to enable the council chambers to support a hybrid meeting option that would include, you know, the the in-person as well as a Zoom component of the meetings would entail significant costs in order to upgrade the city council chamber facilities to support a bandwidth that would support the the broadcast of Zoom. And also considering that, you know, there may be several people, including the council members and or commission members that are on Zoom in that meeting. And we need to make sure that we have the necessary bandwidth to support the individual access to Zoom as well as PCTV's access and broadcast of the the meeting via Zoom as well. We need to consider the lead time that's needed in order to enable the facilities to support an additional meeting format component such as Zoom or the call-in feature. And together with the lead time, considering the target in-person ready date. So when when will be, when do we want to target for being back to in-person meetings? And the lead time involved in preparing for a particular meeting format may, such as, you know, enabling the Zoom component, that may not may not be ready in the time that we would like to go back to in-person meetings. So there may be some gap there for enabling the type of meeting format that we wish to do. Considering additional ongoing costs, considering staff resource requirements, the amount of staff time involved in preparing for Zoom meetings and the number of staff involved in facilitating the the live meeting with Zoom is more than the staff needed for just a straight in-person meeting. Feasibility and testing, we want to make sure that the meeting format is fully tested and ready to go once we start implementing a meeting in that format. So making sure, for instance, that there's no bad audio feedback issues. It, for instance, if you have an in-person with Zoom, if you're doing kind of the room and Zoom feature, making sure that there's no bad, you know, feedback from the audio system with the Zoom and the different headsets and microphones, particularly if they're in close proximity to each other. Considering meeting location dependencies, not all of the meeting locations where the committee and commission meetings occur may be enabled for the type of meeting format that we're looking at, either in-person plus call-in or plus Zoom components. Also considering capacities and the public and the members' comfort level with the with the amount of people and the capacity limits for the meeting. Considering possibly like enabling overflow areas for people to observe the meeting and compliance with COVID safety guidelines. Also considering for which committees and commissions to enable that meeting format that we're looking at. So, for instance, are we looking at it just for council meetings or for council and planning commission meetings or for all city committee and commission meetings? Like I mentioned equity of access. Does that meeting format provide equity of access to the public for those that may not have stable internet connections in their homes? And future needs and expectations beyond COVID. So kind of looking towards the future and choosing a meeting format that if we're choosing something that we just want to get by for the near future, is that setting an expectation that we continue that meeting format into into the future beyond the near term? And then considering risks and dependencies and limitations of the meeting format. So I discussed what happens if a meeting format is chosen that has some kind of technical difficulty that arises during the meeting or prior to the meeting would that necessitate counseling that meeting if we're not able to provide it in the format that has been chosen or required?
Great. Thank you. I know this is a lot of information for the council. I'll scoot pretty quickly through this this last slide so we can move into questions and discussion and public input. I did want to, at the same time, because it's obviously related, provide an update regarding just the general reopening of of city services. Reopening is kind of a misnomer because we have been open and providing services through, you know, online and by appointments and all of that. But we did update, and it's attached to the packet, our Restoration of Operations Plan provided an addendum which talks to some of the details for general city services and essential services. And so I won't go into the details here. You know, some of the COVID-19 guidelines are evolving and will evolve more on June 15th. Important to note that, you know, the safety of employees and safety of members of the community still remains the the driving factor in how we're doing things. Obviously, at play here is if we are going to renovate the civic center and move temporarily and set up the civic center at the community center, that that's a that's a transition that is at play this summer. And so on that note, you know, we're working on on those relocation plans. The tentative timeline post-city council approval of the budget is for staff relocation to the community center in the July-August timeframe. And once we are at the community center, And once we are at the community center, the goal would be then all remaining non-essential civic center in-person services would anticipate to be open at the community center after the relocation. So I wanted to make sure to touch on these these other aspects. Really, the main piece of tonight is discussion of future city council meetings. Next slide, please. So in in wrapping things up, just for guiding the the conversation, the next steps in selecting meeting formats, you know, from tonight's presentation, does council have input on the options? Is there one clear preference for the council? Again, a lot of information, so there's not a need to, you know, make a decision or or settle on one clear preference. But if there were, that would help us in our continuing planning. We would need, you know, direction to, based on that input, regarding further research and assessment, more detailed assessment of the costs and staff impacts and conversations with PCTV, et cetera. We need to continue monitoring of legislation because that's that's obviously in the Brown Act requirements. Obviously, very relevant here. And then if the council had a initial thoughts about input on timeline, my recommendation, just with everything that we see going on, is that a potential September timeframe for changes to the council meetings, depending on the option selected, might make sense. You know, vaccinations by that time will be more widespread. And that will allow time for research and testing of systems. And then also allows time for the civic center relocation logistics to have occurred. So, you know, but obviously seeking council's input on on rough timeline as well. And I believe that concludes the presentation. Is that true? Staffs available for questions?
Thank you. I was having a hard time unmuting. So, great. I think we need to hear some discussion and have some discussion among ourselves, council members. And it looks like Councilmember Big Stick is ready to give us his thoughts. Go ahead, please.
Hi, and I I could give thoughts, but I there's one big question that's in my mind. And it seems like a simple question, but it kind of determines a lot of where my thought press process will go. And that question is just, let's say, September is when we do start meeting for in-person meetings again. Do we know that there is going to be a definite cap on how many people are going to be able to fit into that room? Because, and I'll explain that a little, if if we're not worried about how many people are in that room, in-person meeting seems easy and fine to me. Whereas if we know we can only fit 30 people in that room, clearly, I think we're going to need either to go with option two or three. And I appreciate all the reasons we wouldn't want to use three. And yet, I'm not sure that using the phone will be enough. And so that's the wrestling arguing going on in my own head. So my first question is just, on the most fundamental level, is there any chance that we're going to be able to go back to an in-person meeting without having to worry about how many people are in that room?
Yeah, I believe it's the case that the the governor's beyond the blueprint for June 15 is lifting those those social distancing capacity restrictions. So so we would be just limited to to the our normal, you know, capacity at the council chamber. But I will ask City Clerk Coffey or City Attorney Zano or others who might have more detail about that. Or City Attorney Kenyon.
Hi. It's me. So I I think your question, council member, is basically, will these capacity restrictions be in place after June and certainly by September? From what we are hearing, it looks like there will not be capacity limitations after June, although it's not definite as of yet. And I would certainly expect that unless, you know, a new, you know, something that we are not aware of right now occurs, you know, something beyond what our senses can tell us now, there would there will be no capacity restrictions on in-person meetings. I think, as, you know, City Manager Woodhouse said, the only restrictions would be what, how many people can we hold in our chambers? But that's the same restriction that always existed. And I'm not aware of any meeting where that limit was exceeded, or if it was, we went to a different location. So to generally answer your question, I believe when these in-person meetings are actually going to take place, it's safe for the council to assume at this point, for purposes of this discussion, that there will be no capacity restrictions.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm really curious about what other cities are doing. And it would be very helpful for me to have information like that when considering this. And then I want to hear from the public, too. So those are my two things.
And I can chime in. I had a a call last Thursday with all the city managers in the county. And everyone is all over the map. And as a matter of fact, our our public discussion about this is probably one of the first because they all requested our study session report that they could refer to in the research we've done. But in terms of timelines for reopening meetings and what they expect to do, they're all over the map right now at this point. So unfortunately, at this point, I don't think that information is is very helpful. But again, this is an initial conversation, and we'll keep tracking that.
Thank you. Councilmember Vatalas.
I think this is a difficult decision because we've had extremely more people commenting by Zoom than we have at any regular in-person meeting that we've had. Although we've had complaints that there are people who cannot do Zoom and have a difficult time. That's why Zoom has the call-in feature, so that you can use your phone. So it's kind of a toss-up for me. I mean, I like to see people. I'd like to see all of you guys. But I I'm not sure. I'm really not sure. That's the my answer. It's like I could see it all in all of the ways if we could have Zoom and the in-person. Sometimes, though, I wouldn't want to be driving home at midnight when I could just walk to my room. So, you know, there's so many things. So anyway.
Do you have anything you wanted to add or speak on? Okay, I did want to clarify before we can have our public comment. Right after that, I mean, we have time. And I want to hear from the public. One thing I noted is we have more to my glancing over it. And Assistant City Clerk Brooks could probably speak to it more. It seems like we have more call phone call-in people tonight than I've seen. You know, and and so it's an interesting, almost learning curve component that the longer this goes on, the more people become familiar with or understand the technology or the ability to do it. So my question in that regard is, is there an option that's just phoning in and not Zooming? That would be considered part of option three?
That that's option two.
Oh, just option two is, I mean, option two is just phone. Okay, so I got to say, I'm kind of, I know it's like work and money and technology and hard. And our council chambers is not at all equipped for this. I get it. But I really have to say I'm leaning on toward a two or three version of what to do in the future. Of course, being open to hearing more about what everybody else is doing. I also want to say I'm I'm sympathetic to, and I understand the need for waiting till September because of just, there's so much going on with the move. And I think it's, it would be too much to add to staff's level of uncertainty and unique operations. To also add to all of that, the level of testing that I know needs to go on with whatever system we decide. There's a lot of rehearsing and pretend meetings that staff engage in to make sure this all works. So that would be my feeling about September. Any other comments from council before we open to public comment?
Just that I am curious also about the number of call-ins because we've never had this many call-ins. So.
Right? I just like. Number, 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 number. That's very interesting. All right, yes, Councilmember Big Stick.
Sorry, I'm going through these. There we go. I actually have a theory why there are so many call-ins tonight. It it might actually have something to do with a particular item later on the agenda, but that's just a theory. A big part of my thought process also, as I'm I'm kind of, I want to know what the state does with Brown Act. I want to know which direction they go before making a decision. And as far as two versus three, like, two seems simpler. But if three has that call-in component along with it, I seem to have read that with the the call-in option, it might make it more difficult for somebody calling in to watch the meeting while they're calling. Whereas with the Zoom option, they don't have that problem. And it seems to me that as we go into a future that becomes more technologically advanced, not less, it might be worth it to have that investment now so that we start forming that infrastructure for ourselves. Because again, there's presumably more advancement that will be coming as we go along. Otherwise, again, I'm I'm kind of comfortable with number one, depending on the discussion revolving around health, but I don't know how comfortable that is health-wise. So I'm done.
Okay, I'd like to open public comment. If we could, please, Deputy City Clerk Brooks.
Councilmember O'Neil has his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see that. I'm sorry, Council.
Well, no, I was just asking, are we in deliberations or waiting for public comment? Because council members are making comments about which preference they have. And that's usually not done till after public comment.
Okay, let's do public comment. Assistant City Clerk, Deputy City Clerk.
Hands up yet, Mayor Beckmeyer?
Looking to see if we have hands.
For those phoning in, star nine on your phone will raise your hand. And then we would call on you by the last four digits of the number from what you're calling. And a star six will unmute yourself once you're called upon.
We have one hand raised. Call-in user last four digits zero, zero, nine, one. Press star six and please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, City Council. My name is Christian Cladia. I'm actually a union representative for Local 648. I'd like to bring up the topic on item 10 regarding the hazard pay. And it's a long.
Okay. I need to, I'm sorry to interrupt you at this moment, but I need to interrupt you. We're going to be taking up that item during our regular meeting, which begins at 7:00 PM. We do have, as you stated, an agenda with numbered items. And so we'll be getting to that item as we will in due course, according to our scheduled agenda. So if you want to hang on the call, and then you can raise your hand at that time when we ask for public comment on that item. Thank you. Did you see any other hands, Deputy City Clerk?
No other hands at this time.
All right, let's bring it back to council. I'll close public comment. So the city manager said that it's not required to have direction. It was more a matter of trying to get a sense of where the council is and what the concerns and thoughts are.
Councilmember O'Neil has his hand up.
Councilmember O'Neil, please speak.
I was wondering if Sarah might be able to put the three choices up above in front of us again so we can know, you know what I mean, what they look like. But my preference would be item two, would be item number two because I think it requires the least amount of investment for infrastructure. I think it'd be easiest on staff, and most people do have a phone of some sort. And the Zoom meetings, I think, if you start getting into, are we going to do Zoom for emergency preparedness in open space and all of that? You're starting to get into where are we going to hold these? How are we going to pay for that? The extra staff that's allocated for that? So I think we go with, my preference would be option two with call-in public comments. But in people, in person for people that want to come to a podium. And of course, I think ourselves and all staff, and if, let's say, to appeal for Planning Commission idea, the applicant and the opponent both come to the, sorry, the phone going on. But that the the presenters have to be in person. Okay, to be shared with people. And then they also think this is something we can look at in six months and change if we want to because we're probably going to be adopting this to to law. So that's my comment.
Thank you. And so with that, Councilmember O'Neil, are you think, how are you feeling about the September timeframe?
I'm okay with this September timeframe.
Okay. Other council members? I'm trying to clear my screen so I can see you. If you have your hand up. I don't see hands, but Mayor Protem will back me up if there are any.
Subvitalas has her hand up.
See? Thank you. Councilmember.
I just raised it.
No, she just said this really fast, just to see if I saw it.
Yeah. The the in-person with call-in. I'm fine with all in-person, too, but I do understand some people won't come out. I I think that we may, I mean, it depends. There's so many depending items because if they change the Brown Act and they tell us we need to go back to in-person, then we need to go back to in-person. I mean, they they could totally change that law. So September's fine. I understand about moving City Hall and it being kind of complicated to do it all at once. So basically, number two for me.
So I'll go ahead and and give my two cents. So I feel like, again, it's really important for me to understand what other cities are doing. And I think because everything has changed, right? Everything has changed. We, you know, we had a global pandemic. Everything changed. So there's going to be people who are not going to be comfortable coming to meetings in person. And so if there's any way for us to have the technology in place to do number three, that's what I would, that's what I would prefer. I realize it takes a lot of time and and money. And I'm wondering if there's any money, like, from ARPA or or some kind of COVID-related dollars that could help us pay for some of that technology. And then if that's not all possible, then I'm good for number two. And September's fine.
Thank you. Councilmember Big Stick.
I'm a little confused in terms of, and I'm not sure if this is the time to have the discussion, but what the delineation is between these methods and the different kinds of meetings. So like, what we choose for, if we choose one of these options, will that hold true for beautification? Will that hold true for emergency preparedness? Or if we go with option two, say, will that be only for city council and planning commission meetings? And something like beautification would be all in-person?
So the, one of the parameters, sorry, Councilmember Big Stick, didn't mean to cut you off. Okay. But one of the parameters certainly is the the location of the meeting. And the report discusses this a bit. And whether PCTV. And whether P C T V is there to assist with the phone call in queue. Um, and I, the, the, I think that if we're talking about trying to extend options two or three to all committee and commission meetings, we'd be looking at trying to hold all of those meetings in the council chambers. Because it would be potentially very difficult. But, you know, we don't have all the answers yet, so we would need to research it more. But it would be potentially very difficult to do the technology in other locations. And so you know, that, that's a guiding parameter, so. And the only meetings that are televised and streamed are planning commission and city council.
Right, and so I'm just fine saying, okay, option two, say, for example, with council and planning commission. I just want to make sure that we're not also giving direction for these other meetings, which traditionally kind of hop around or have other locations. Um, and then my other question is, I'm, I'm fine with September, no problem. But I'm wondering what the odds are that the emergency order is rescinded in such a way that we have to be back in council chambers. You know, as of after June fifteenth, um, because of the nature of the way it falls. So again, I kind of go back to my original statement, which is I really want to know what the state is going to do before I think too deeply in terms of what we should do.
Yeah, and, and we will need to continue to track that. At, at this point in time, June fifteenth being a month away, um, I, I would doubt that there's going to be an order that requires back to in-person meetings without some substantial advance notice, but we need to track that. It's an unknown.
Thank you.
So in terms of finding out what other cities are doing, is, would we just rely on you, city manager, to bring this back forward to us? Or do we want to ask? Back forward, or do we want to ask for a set time to come back with information from the other city managers? What do you want, council? What's your preference?
Kevin can't really report on actions of other cities until the other cities take action. So I, I think what we need to do is just kind of like put on our long pants and make a, give him a preference in the decision today. And, you know, figure June fifteenth, we're all open and we shoot for September. And we go with probably the easiest option is option two at this point. And then we amend our decision depending on what happens with the state. For all we know, the state, uh, I tuned into one state meeting and they had some obscure Zoom type of meeting format that I couldn't even get into. So the state might come up with the government, Cal Gov Network for all public hearings or meetings, who knows? So I don't want to invest a lot of technology into something that might be obsolete, a lot of money into technology that might be obsolete in five or six months. I think just go with the standard call in because people that can't make it to the, to the building can actually call in. They can watch it live stream on TV. Okay, because I'm assuming that would still be part of option two, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they can watch it on TV, call in or drive down there depending on what they want until we, until the dust settles later this year, and then we revisit it and make a decision if we want to change that. That's my preference.
Okay. Anything else that we should add in closing?
May I think having the option to revisit it um makes me feel more comfortable, just because I think we are going to need to revisit it. So I, I'll agree with um, Councilmember O'Neil.
We have council of cities on Friday and I'm going in person. And I will take a very informal poll of mayors and council members to see what they're thinking about. Very informal.
That is a hybrid model meeting too.
It's going to be a hybrid meeting, so we'll see how that goes too.
Great. Anything, any last thoughts? Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn. We have four minutes for a brief break before we start our seven P M meeting. Thank you. To order at seven P M, this is the regular meeting of the City Council of Pacifica. Could we have real call, please?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Present.
Councilmember Vadoas.
Here.
Councilmember O'Neil. Mayor Protem Beer.
Here.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Here. And Mayor Protem, will you give us a salute to the flag?
I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. City Clerk Coffee, would you please explain the conditions for conducting this meeting?
Yes, tonight, this meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. This meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel twenty-six or online at W W W dot city of pacifica.org slash live stream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on an agenda item or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that agenda item. For those participating by phone, star nine will raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk or deputy city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time and will um call by the last four digits of your phone number for dial-in or by screen name for those that are uh, participating via Zoom. Once uh, you're called upon, you can unmute yourself if dialing in by using star six. Please clearly state your full name for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and provided to council members. Email comments are not monitored during the live meeting. The format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check on the status of the meeting by visiting the city's website at W W W dot city of pacifica.org for any updates.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we have three special presentations this evening. The first one is Pacifica Beach Bites Bingo. And I did not see our representatives from the Economic Development Committee and the, and/or the Chamber of Commerce in the attendees. Am I missing them? Or are they, are, or are they on a phone in tonight on a phone call?
I have one hand raised by a phone in from last four digits, three, one, two, six. Um, we'll check to see if that is either of our representatives for Beach Bite Bingo. Call in user three, one, two, six.
No, I am not calling for that reason. I, I put in the star nine because I want to comment later.
Okay, um, so you start on again when we get to your agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead. Um, we can circle back if they are able to join us. And if not, we'll postpone that item until the next uh, council meeting. And let's go ahead with the proclamation for Pride Month. All right. I'm going to make my screen a little bigger because I don't have this in, uh-oh. Uh-oh. Just a second. Hmm. There we are. Sorry, thank you. All right, this is a proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition of Pride Month. Whereas the city of, the city council of the City of Pacifica recognizes and proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-one as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout the City of Pacifica. And whereas the City of Pacifica joins the County of San Mateo in observing Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQ movement and support the rights of all citizens to experience equality and freedom from discrimination. And whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, the city council calls upon the people of Pacifica to embrace this principle and to work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists. And whereas LGBTQ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of our country. And whereas, while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice. And whereas the City of Pacifica is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people in our diverse community. And whereas the City of Pacifica is honored to commemorate the opening on June first, twenty twenty-one of the new Coast Pride Center located at seven one one Main Street in downtown Half Moon Bay, which will serve as a safe space to provide support services to the LGBTQ plus and to community and to embrace the diversity of everyone on the coast. And whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for San Mateo County's LGBTQ community and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance and advance equal rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Pacifica hereby proclaims the month of June twenty twenty-one as Pride Month in support of the LGBTQ plus community and recognizes all LGBTQ plus residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods make Pacifica a vibrant community in which to live, work, and visit. Done this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty twenty-one. Lovely. All right. Uh, let us see if there is a comment from pub, from council, anything, or shall we go straight to public comment?
I saw a public comment, but.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's have public comment to begin with. Thank you, Deputy City Clerk.
Mayor Beckmeyer, the hand that was raised is no longer raised. It's back up. Well, first here from Reverend Terry. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Terry Eckelberger and I'm happy to be with you today. And uh, I just want to reach out as a member of the San Mateo O G P T Q Commission to say thank you again for joining with other San Mateo counties who are celebrating Pride Month with us again this year. The proclamation is important to remind everyone that our city is making an effort to make Pacifica a safe and welcoming place for all its citizens. And Pacifica is one of the last cities that doesn't fly the pride flag during Pride Month. So I'm really pleased we're going to discuss that later on this year. We're also very excited about Coast Pride and their new building and their expanding programs. And it's wonderful that you're commemorating them as part of this proclamation. They're bringing together San Mateo County coast side in support of the LGBTQ community, and that includes Pacifica. It's a wonderful effort being run by an all volunteer crew. And I think Jenny Walter is here and hopefully she'll raise her hand and give us just a little bit better uh, information about their new efforts. Thanks again. We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
There's no other hands raised at this time, Mayor Beckmeyer. Jenny Walter just put her hand up. All right. And it's down again. Jenny, please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Walter and I am so pleased to be here today um, and want to show my appreciation um to you, mayor, to the council for this amazing and wonderful proclamation. I want to personally invite you to the grand opening of Coast Pride Center. It is for all queer, trans, and allies from Pescadero to Pacifica. And we are opening on noon on June first, and I want to extend an invitation to all of you and everybody in the public. Um, we are also providing, if you'd like, um, a flag for when you do choose to um raise it. And I just wanted to share that we've been only in existence for two years. But with, we've been embraced from Pescadero through Half Moon Bay to Pacifica. And we've been able to open up this brick and mortar building in order to bring health and wellness programs, education and visibility programs, and social justice programs. I was talking to your superintendent of schools and we're going to be partnering on projects as well as with the Pacifica Resource Center. And so I'm just very pleased to be here. I just want to show on behalf of our Coast Pride Board, thank you so very much. As, as Terry said, we're all volunteers and we are operating the uh, center with volunteers from the community. So I invite everyone to join us. And uh, with that, I, that's really all I want to do is say our, our huge, enormous heartfelt appreciation. On June first, Supervisor Horstley will be um, opening up the ceremonies. We'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony and, and just some fun, so hope you'll join us. And again, thank you so very much for bringing visibility um, to the diversity of our coast side.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands at this time, Mayor Beckmeyer.
All right, let's close public comment on this item. Bring it back to council. Mayor, for any comments? Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Mayor, and um to Jenny Walter's comments, I, I don't know if I missed the email or not, but I'd love to know the physical location of where that's going to be. So that if I can get the time off of work, I'd love to attend. Um, and you know, I have members of my family who are members of the community. And I have very close friends who are members of the community. So uh, that we're making this proclamation means a lot to me. Given my family and um like another of the. And like another of the commenters, I'm glad we're taking up flags a little later in the evening. And it was good for me to see the plus on one of the whereses in the proclamation. And I'm, as somebody who has members of my family, I, you know, I'm still learning more about the pluses as we go along and expand awareness. So I'm looking forward to seeing more pluses in proclamations down the road. And I'm very happy that we're making sure to support our brothers and sisters as we learn to get along with one another, whomever we happen to be. Thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk Coffee, if you wouldn't mind, I forgot which whereas it was, but there's a whereas that states the address of the Coast Pride Center?
It is at 711 Main Street in Half Moon Bay.
And I wrote down that it's noon, the event's at noon on...
Noon on June 1st, at 711 Main Street, Half Moon Bay.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no further comments, we will move on.
There are comments.
Okay.
Mayor O'Neill has his hand up.
Oh my gosh, I have been looking for a hand up there.
Down into attendees, and you know, under the column attendees, and the hands show up, okay? At the bottom of the screen. No, I just wanted to say thank you to the, to the women that spoke about this and making us aware of the center down there. I didn't even know we had a center on the coast for that, for those services or whatever. So I just wanted to say thank you. And I also have some of the family members that are part of the community, as Tiger called them. And I just wanted to say thanks for awareness, and hopefully this will be work towards everybody kind of living in peace and being more tolerant of everybody's lifestyles. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vaterlos.
Mary was first.
Oh, councilmember, I mean Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Oh, you're so nice. Thank you. For one, I want to thank everybody who showed up tonight and who spoke. I'm really excited about the Pride Center on the coast. I know how hard it was and how many people it took to get the Pride Center in San Mateo up and running. And I know how much work goes into it today to keep it running and how many, how much funding goes into it. So hearing that you have an all-volunteer staff, that's very exciting, and I can't wait to come down there and see. So thanks a lot.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
And I agree, this is really special for everyone, all of us, everyone else out there, because we're all involved and we all care. And I just thank you very much and look forward to seeing the flag.
And I'll just conclude with, this is one of those really prideful moments of being a councilmember. And I'm very pleased about the proclamation and looking forward to the conversation and discussion and deliberation on the flag later in the meeting. Okay, let's move on to a presentation from Resource Conservation District, Kelly Nelson? Kellex Nelson?
Mayor Beckmeyer, while City Clerk Coffee is promoting Kellex to panelists, I'd just like to introduce the item that Councilmember O'Neill sits on the Local Agency Formation Commission. And the RCD has been doing some, the Resource Conservation District has been doing some presentations to LAFCO. And Councilmember O'Neill and I talked about how it would be a great thing to have Kellex, the executive director of the RCD, present what the RCD is about. They've been doing some significant work in San Pedro Creek, along with the Watershed Coalition and the city. And she'll talk more about that during her presentation. So we're happy to have Ms. Nelson here tonight.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. And no worries about trying to figure out the X. It always looks like a typo. My name is Kellex Nelson, and now you'll always recognize it when you see it, and I can't hide from anything. I think that I was made a co-host so that I could share a screen. Is that? Yes, I can. So, there we go. There we go. Can you all see my screen properly? Okay. So, thank you again for having me this evening. It's been a few years since I've presented to the City Council in Pacifica. And I think it's all new folks now, so I'm glad to have an opportunity to be before you and talk about the Resource Conservation District. I typically describe the RCD as the best form of local government that you've never heard of. Some people know us very well and others not so well, but we are a special district in San Mateo County that was formed in 1939 to help people help the land. We're a local hub for environmental conservation and provide very much boots-on-the-ground assistance that I'll describe in a little bit more detail. My presentation due is going to be pretty brief because I want to be able to answer any questions you might have about what we're considering with this boundary alignment. We generally serve the western half of San Mateo County, but there are some significant areas of exclusion. So this map isn't, this map shows really where most of our services are, but not exactly where our boundaries are. I'll talk about that pretty soon. So the way that we work is unique in the environmental space. We're a public agency, but we are non-regulatory, and we accomplish voluntary conservation. You know that joke, "Or the government were here to help"? We actually are. We were formed by private landowners in the 30s for the purpose of bringing confidential, non-regulatory, free technical assistance. And since that time, our mandate has evolved so that we work across public and private lands, across jurisdictions and boundaries. And we address whatever the most pressing priorities are in the natural resources space of the communities that we serve. We have very diverse tools that we can use. We provide technical assistance. We do education and outreach programs for adults and youth, landowners, land managers, regulators, municipalities. We design and implement projects, but we always work in partnership with others. So when I say "we," for anything I reference in this presentation, you can take it as a certainty that it involves others as well. Our focal areas, our program areas, are water, climate, wildlife, agriculture, and most recently, forest health and fire resilience. In the water program areas, it's both about water supply, water availability, as well as water quality and mitigating water pollution. In fact, if anyone wants to know about, a little bit more about our work with water quality on our YouTube page, there's a link to it at the end of this presentation, is the MidCoast Water Quality webinar that we recently did about our findings from all of the monitoring. With climate change, we're focused both on adapting to climate change, but also mitigating climate change by literally reversing it, not just reducing emissions, but sequestering greenhouse gases. And we focus a lot of our work on threatened and endangered species, including much of our work in Pacifica to help threaten steelhead trout. We help local farms remain viable. And as I mentioned, most recently, we moved into the program area of protecting forest health and improving fire resilience on the wildland urban interface. So I'm just going to show some pictures that just kind of highlight some of our work. By no means is this exhaustive. I mentioned water conservation. We've received a number of awards for our work to improve resilience to drought and water conservation. And we will work anywhere where we're invited. We've worked with cemeteries in Colma, campgrounds on the south coast, with agricultural operations, large and small, and accomplished substantial water conservation and helped improve the stream flow that's in the creeks. In other parts of the state, you hear about conflicts between fish and farmers over water, but not here, in part because we're addressing that with our program that helps ensure water for farms, fish, and people. Much of our work is also focused on water quality, water pollution, reducing water pollution. The upper left, you'll see a larger-scale project where you can see where we died, Pillar Point Harbor, as part of our study to determine the sources of chronic bacterial contamination at the harbor and in local beaches. Other projects that we do are small implementation projects, working with residential property owners, property by property, helping them manage manure, maybe from horses or goats, outreach campaigns to clean up pet waste, manage stormwater coming off from their properties, permeable pavers, rain gardens, rainwater harvesting, et cetera. We also help landowners with catastrophic and minor erosion. You know, this gully that you're looking at opened up in one large storm a couple of years ago. And we worked across property ownerships and responsibilities and jurisdictions to repair this gully and protect the creek, as well as the property. We've provided significant assistance to the community of Pescadero, to where we dredged about a mile and a half through Pescadero Marsh and across county property and two private properties to reduce the flooding, the chronic flooding of the road, which also addressed water quality and water circulation in the harbor to stop the annual die-offs of threatened steelhead trout. That's the same extraordinary charismatic fish that's migrating right now in San Pedro Creek. And in Pacifica, we have done work from working with equestrian operations to manage their manure, to protect the creek, with community gardens and individuals. We, the city contracts with us to help you with compliance with water quality regulations, the TMDL, and water quality monitoring. We're partnering with the city and the county and the Watershed Coalition and the Land Trust right now on this Adobe Creek Bridge project to find something that is going to help ensure that fish can restore their ancestral migration. And at the same time, we help to protect properties from erosion and perhaps in that process can improve habitat and water quality. I mentioned fire. I think there's a lot of increased attention to fire. Our program, we help reduce the risk of catastrophic fire, particularly at the wildland urban interface. We also have been called upon in the last catastrophic fires that occurred in this county last August to provide significant post-fire recovery technical assistance. And we were also able, because we're a very nimble form of local government, small local government, we were able to repurpose some crews that were doing a habitat restoration project to fight the fire and help hold the line so that it didn't expand northward. With climate, as I mentioned, we help build resilience or adapt to climate change. But a really cool program is also that we develop carbon farm plans to help ensure that agricultural operations, row crops, ranch operations, et cetera, can be part of the solution to climate change by literally drawing greenhouse gases down out of the atmosphere and storing them in healthy, biologically diverse, rich soils and vegetation from which they originally came. We, for the first nine plans that we completed for San Mateo County, that's on nine properties in San Mateo County, when implemented, will sequester 1,240 tons of carbon dioxide equivalent annually. Just those nine plans are equivalent to 268 cars taken off the road every year, or 3 million miles driven, or 143 homes taken off. So the opportunity in our county and beyond, and Resource Conservation Districts across the state are doing this work, is extraordinary. And if I ever have the chance to talk with you more about that, I'd love to. And so when you put all of this together at scale here, this is a, this is a, an overview of the Pescadero watershed, for example. Where property by property at scale on these, working on these projects and technical assistance to provide integrated, comprehensive, holistic solutions, we can reduce flooding, protect water supply, reduce the risk of fire, sequester carbon, restore habitat for endangered species, reduce erosion, improve water quality. And while this is not as significant in Pacifica proper, really helping ensure agricultural viability, though within the boundaries of the City of Pacifica, we also help with urban gardens and, you know, community gardens. So that's what it looks like at scale when you bring it all together. And what was mentioned when Kevin introduced me was that we're now going through a process. We've completed some of the process with LAFCO to revise our sphere of influence and align our boundaries so that our boundaries actually reflect the work that we do. When we were first formed in the 30s, it was a response to the Dust Bowl crisis, and we were foreseen only to be an agricultural services agency. Since that time, we work on really different emergent issues and recognize that we need to look at watershed scale and beyond for things like stormwater management, endangered species migration, climate change, fire. We're now working in a sphere that doesn't see boundaries the way that we were originally formed. And we actually already provide substantial services in the areas that are not within our boundaries because we're enabled to do that in the statute that created us, Division 9 of the state's Public Resources Code. So we're going through a process now to close those donut holes and try to have a contiguous border that is basically from Highway 280 to the ocean. And that's it. This was somewhat brief because I wanted to be able to answer any questions that come up. I figured that most of the value would come from the conversation. Take a screenshot or a picture with your phone, or I can follow up with folks later. Here's my email address, our website, our social media pages. Our YouTube page has a lot of very brief and some longer videos, from webinars to just a brief video on site at one of our projects, if you want to learn a little bit about us. And with that, I will stop the share and get back on screen with you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much for a very information-packed presentation that just leaves me wanting to know more on every single slide.
Great.
We'll pretty much be here all night. No, just kidding. So I think to be time-efficient, I did want to check in with Councilmember O'Neill as to specifics that you think, Mike, that you wanted to make sure we're thinking about with regard to the Resource Conservation District? And then I'll open it to any other council comments.
First of all, I wanted to thank her for coming and visiting us. I never heard of your, I never heard of the district prior to LAFCO. And then I find out that they actually were operating in Pacifica. But I just thought the specific areas, I figured that they might be able to help us with would be San Pedro Creek watershed, which they already are. But I also think the fire forest management, you know, is the biggest proportion that I hope they could aid us. And I also think probably Valamar would be a good sort of area and Rockaway, given they both have the creeks there. I think we have eight or nine creeks in Pacifica. I got a poster at home of all of them. But several of them are underground now, under conduits, so. But I think Rockaway, Valamar, and San Pedro are the three biggest creeks they could help us with and the fire, wildfire mitigation. So I'll let my fellow councilmembers. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you for being here tonight, Kellex. I first heard you present on a county meeting about wildfire mitigation. And so when I saw that you were going to be on the agenda tonight, I was, I became very excited because everything you said then was nothing but learning as it was tonight. And I think that Councilmember O'Neill knows the right questions to ask far better than I do. And so I'll certainly echo everything he said. But thank you for being here tonight, and I'm excited for any deeper work we get to do with you. So thank you.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Hi, thank you very much. It was very informative. Someone presented to me the other day some garbage catchers for the creeks so that the garbage could be collected. I know that we have salmon in at least one of our creeks, and I was wondering if you've done that in the county.
Have we installed? No, you know, we haven't. The trash in the creeks is really significant for a number of different reasons, but it's actually not a priority-limiting factor for salmonids, believe it or not. So it's... So it's, it can have other aspects of water quality that can be a risk to human health. And it can be just unpleasant and it can get out of the ocean where it can have a lot of impacts on marine life. But for the steelhead that you have in that watershed, which are just extraordinary, extraordinary animals. And if there's ever an opportunity to come back here just to tell you their life story, I would welcome that opportunity because the fact that you have an intact watershed with these animals making this nearly miraculous mysterious migration and spawning in your backyards. And you have this watershed coalition that is well organized and so competent and sophisticated. It is the perfect recipe for success. It's amazing. And I'm not answering your question. So the answer to your question, no, we haven't installed those trash racks for that purpose. It's something that we could probably help with because it is important for creek health.
Right. And maybe in other creeks besides the one where the steelhead are.
Yeah, it is important to manage trash in these creeks. And it's really important for what happens when it's washed out to sea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to thank you. Thank you again. Everyone's thanking you. But wow, there's so much information that I really, really want more. I do. Like I want to understand how, how I can support the work that's going on here in Pacifica. So if there's any way for you to come back, maybe we can do a study session or something where we can really dig deep and understand how we can support. I would really appreciate that a lot.
Thank you. I would welcome that.
Thank you so much for the work you're doing. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I agree with Mayor Protem. I think there are almost endless numbers of individuals and groups in town, many of whom are probably working with you already, many of whom I know are not, are not aware of you at all. So a super important priority for me. And in the pre-COVID days, I would say, let's have a town hall, let's have an open meeting, let's do da da. I don't know what that would look like at this point and how to work on scheduling, but we'll definitely work together on getting that done. I would love to have a presentation about San Pedro Creek and those salmonids. I just read that term. I felt so proud of myself that I understood what it was when I was reading our, our Outfall Project at Sarah Drive, also affecting San Pedro Creek. And I'll just segue for a second. There is a very, very interesting master's degree thesis project on the watershed website for San Pedro Creek from a young man that did his whole study on these, these fish and diving in the creek and counting them. And I mean, one night I was just like reading page after, it was very fascinating and interesting. So I agree. I think that for students in, in our city would be, I work at Pacifica School District, would be extremely interesting. We had a teacher that used to do a hatching thing with salmon eggs. They went somewhere else. I don't know where. And it was all very organized. It was a whole project that the kids were super, super intrigued by. So I think there's probably so much opportunity. I did have one question about, you mentioned it is a special district. And my orientation on special districts is they have funding. And so I'm wondering if you can elaborate on your funding and how that works.
Yeah, so we're, I think the word is scrappy. So, so we, we receive about, because all of the areas where basically where people live were excluded from our, our boundaries and much of the uplands is protected open space and public ownership or land trusts that don't, you know, likely don't pay property taxes. Our operating base, what we receive from property taxes is $65,000 a year. So our annual, if it gives you an indication, our annual budget this year is nearly $13 million and it's almost entirely from grants. The good news about that is what it means is that for, in recent years, for every dollar of property taxes we receive from constituents, we brought in between $100 and $150 of leverage of state and federal and other funds. It's extraordinary what value people get for their tax dollar with the RCD. So we, so we function like a nonprofit, but we have the accountability of government. You know, so we're subject to, you know, Brown Act, public records requests, government code, et cetera. We, you know, have annual audits, everything's on our website, all of that and the kinds of practices that we have to have in place. And then we function like a nonprofit in that we're really dependent on grants. And then one of the challenges is that nonprofits can typically go to foundations for, you know, operating sort of support. Whereas foundations and private donors are often, well, foundations are often restricted by charter or by culture from giving to public agencies. And so it makes us very, very dependent on state bond money and federal grants that are restricted to very specific tasks. So I can get $2, $3 million to remove a barrier to fish migration, but we don't have a single communications person, not a single grant manager or development officer. We have one administrative staff or one and a half now. And almost all of our funding is straight through to program delivery and direct services. So it's, it's pretty, we're pretty scrappy and resourceful. And it also means that we're good at leveraging, we've just learned how to leverage investment. So for example, the city of Pacifica just offered a $5,000 cash match that we use to, to apply for and receive 5,000 cash. And I think it's 12,000 in-kind services for which we're getting like a $141,000 planning grant to try to address the, the issue in the creek at a, at a B W bridge. And we're trying to fix that. And part of the way that we want to fix that is this boundary alignment that, that shows where we, where our services actually are, what our district actually is. But we're not going to go, we're not planning right now to go for any sort of ballot initiative because we don't think, among other things, that the RCD has the kind of name recognition. So people would, we're esoteric to a lot of people. And we would not have probably two-thirds people voting to tax themselves for something that they've never heard of. And, and people would often think that we would come with new regulations or what have you. It's so hard to believe that we actually exist to provide free confidential technical assistance to private landowners. It's just, it's kind of too good to believe. I know that sounds like I'm tooting the organization's horn, but that's only because I'm tooting her horn.
Totally get it. And
It's hard.
And the history of, you know, starting in the 30s and how it became about is just so fascinating too. So, so much more to learn. Any other last comments? I think we had a hand up in public comment as well. If I'm not mistaken.
There's one hand raised in public comment. Richard Hedges, you're our first speaker for this item. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Richard Hedges and I thought this was very fascinating. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmembers for bringing this up. I just wanted to tell you a little bit more about it, even though it was a great presentation. I would suggest that if you really want to know where this started, read a book called The Worst Hard Time by Timothy Egan. This started in the Roosevelt administration. There were so many people displaced during the Dust Bowl. Over 100 million acres eroded by wind because it stopped raining and soil that should have never been farmed was being farmed during the good rainy years, mainly because of land speculation. And a man who thought he had the answer, Hugh Bennett, kept pestering Roosevelt. And he started, Roosevelt started to try to do something about it. There was a lot of reluctance to fund the money for the Soil Conservation Organization. And on the day it was going to be discussed in Washington DC, was right after what was called Black Sunday, the worst day of the dust storm. And it had blown tons of soil over Boston, New York and Chicago and Washington DC. And the sky darkened with the dust just before they were ready to vote. And that is why you have a Soil Conservation District. So if you really want to know about it, read this book. There are a lot of other things you'll find out about, things I'd never heard of like dust pneumonia that killed so many people. So anyway, I'm going to give you an extra minute, but I really again recommend The Worst Hard Time by Timothy Egan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I don't see any other hands.
All right, I'll bring you back to council then.
And may I just note that, that in our, in our close relationship with the Pacifica Watershed Coalition, also your former council member and a member of the Board of the Watershed Coalition is one of our associate directors, that's John Keener. So just want to recognize that he is also really contributing partner. He and others with that group and with the land trust as well are really great partners in helping us understand where the needs and the opportunities are in, in Pacifica.
Really great. Great work. Very excited to learn about it and look forward to more.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
And thank you, Councilmember O'Neill, for bringing that. Excellent. Wonderful presentation. Okay, let us find our page. And I think I'm on
Beach Binko, Beach Fights.
Kathleen and Archie arrive, to your knowledge. I don't see them. I think we're going to be deferring. Go ahead, City Clerk. Did you have?
Mayor, I don't see either Kathleen Courtney or Archie Juden for that item.
Okay, something must have happened because I know she was planning to be here. So I'm hoping all is well and we will, we'll look forward to having a presentation and another draw from them in a couple of weeks. All right. I have so many papers on my desk. It's scaring me. City Clerk, oh here, never mind. Sorry. Consent calendar. Persons wishing to address the council on any consent calendar item may do so at this time. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. Items on the consent calendar will be adopted by one motion unless the council member or a person in the audience requests before the vote on the motion to have an item discussed. Time limit on comments is three minutes or less. These are items that are items number one through eight on our consent, I mean, on our agenda for tonight. So it's only those items. And I would like to hear from any council members that either have a clarifying comment or a question on any item or have reason that they would like to pull an item.
Madam, Madam Mayor, first to clarify, we would not ask for comments right now. We would just ask for items that the council wants to pull. And then before the consent calendar is voted on, then you would ask, are there any members of the public who would wish to vote on the consent?
I was asking for comments, clarifying comments from council members.
Right. So right now, we're just asking for council members to ask if they want to pull any items, not if they want to comment on those items, just are there any items to pull off of consent for better discussion, fuller discussion?
Council? I think that is a no. All right, now we'll turn to the public. Correct? City Attorney?
Correct. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a comment on any item, one through eight, on the consent calendar?
We have one hand raised from call-in user 3126. Please state your name for the record. You can press star six to unmute.
I'm listening to the discussion and I do want to comment, but the information I have is not consistent with the numbers you've given. I have item number 10 and you went to eight.
That's because we're on our consent agenda, which is items number one through eight. Items 10, 13 are in what we call our consideration items for this meeting. And we haven't gotten to that point yet in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I move our public comment closed for consent.
Yes, I'm closing public comment. Thank you, Council.
I move that we approve the consent items as stated.
I'll second. I have a brief comment to make on number three.
And you can make that now. Councilmember Big Stick.
I just wanted to point out that item number three is essentially the city seeking a quarter million dollars for a chipping program to make evacuation safer and allow emergency responders easier access. It's part and parcel with fire, wildlife fire preparedness. And I just wanted to point that out as we're going into the season.
Thank you. And I actually had a comment on item eight. And it's sort of a clarifying question, but just that there is, there have not been substantial changes to the item eight, the Pacifica Municipal Code Campaign Filing Disclosure Requirements, other than what council deliberated on and discussed and voted on at the last meeting. Is that correct, City Clerk?
That's correct. This item has had no changes from the item that was introduced at the last council meeting.
Wonderful. I think we're ready for a vote.
And consent calendar items number one through eight were moved to be approved by Councilmember O'Neill. Second by Big Stick. I'll do the roll call vote. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Waterloss.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the consent calendar items passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, so we have one, two, three more things to do before we move to our consideration items. So for folks who are in the audience that are wishing to speak on items 10, 11, nine, 10, 11, 12, or 13, please bear with us. We still have our oral communications, which is a section of the meeting for the public to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda. Then we'll have our council communications, which is council members sharing between ourselves and to the public. And then we'll have staff communications from the city manager so that you have a picture in your mind of where we're going. I'm going to read a few words about oral communications and then we'll get started. This portion of the agenda is available for the public to address the city council on any issue that is not on the agenda. Any person wishing to address the council shall be recognized by the mayor during oral communications. However, during that oral communications portion of the agenda, only items not on the agenda for that meeting may be addressed. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any member thereof. Council members shall not enter into debate with speakers under oral communications. A maximum time of three minutes will be allowed for any speaker who are pursuant to Pacifica Municipal Code Title II, Chapter One, Section 2-1.118. Any person making impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks or who becomes boisterous while addressing the council shall be called to order by the presiding officer. And if such conduct continues, may, at the discretion of the presiding officer, be ordered barred from the further audience before the council during the meeting. Thank you very much. And we will have oral communications, Deputy City Clerk.
Our first speaker tonight is Gloria Stofan. Our first speaker tonight is Gloria Stofan. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, city council members and city staff. My name is Gloria Stofan, a Pacifica homeowner since 1966, a member of Faith in Action Bay Area and Pacifica Housing For All. Last Friday, May 21st, Governor Newsom decided not to fund an extension of the eviction moratorium in his state budget proposal. This puts thousands of San Mateo County families at risk for eviction and homelessness. It is highly unlikely that statewide eviction protection and rent debt relief will extend past June 30th of this year. Because of this, it's important for me to express publicly that, and as reported in this week's Tribune, millions in rental assistance remains unspent. So those who are on this city council Zoom meeting and to city council members and city staff, please let those who you know are renting and finding it difficult to pay rent because of the pandemic, that the Pacifica Resource Center and Faith in Action Bay Area can help you. Again, let me repeat that the Pacifica Resource Center and Faith in Action Bay Area can help you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Erin Messias. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Erin Messias of Lindemar. Since it is spring and we are talking about our environment, I would like to plant a seed. There's been a lot of discussion on social media regarding what Ms. Stofan spoke about. There is more housing being removed from the market, and not one housing advocate has spoken on this issue. In Pacifica, we have in excess of 300 Airbnb properties. That means that over 300 housing units have been removed from the housing market. And these are, that's just one website. That doesn't include all of the websites that provide opportunities for people to privately rent housing for vacationers. The the reduction in housing stock is a is a serious conversation because what we're doing to offset offset the reduction in housing stock is we're developing and scarring our hillsides. In addition to that, I haven't seen any conversation or any mention of an opportunity to work with housing providers and to see what this impact has on our rents, housing availability for residents. Have we considered the impact of Airbnb in relation to our development needs and requirements? I would really like to see the city of Pacifica work with housing providers to facilitate conversations to preserve our housing stock instead of the demand to build more of it. Anyway, I firmly believe this warrants a conversation and some consideration. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Christine Bowles, you'll be our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, this is Christine Bowles. And just to Erin's point, I'm, I'm actually really curious because I know we've had a lot of permits for ADUs recently, which is great and it, you know, counts as part of our RENA numbers, but are we actually providing housing with those or are they being temporary transient rentals as hotels? I think that those, that would be really good data for us to understand as we're working on the housing element. My other, my other point I wanted to make tonight, and I'm, and I'm just not quite sure where to go, is just expressing my frustration with the public document request process by state law. As I'm sure you know, a city has 10 days to respond to those, and I know with COVID, there have been some extra 30-day delays. But I have several document requests that are beyond those 30 days now, some that were due April 30th, I think three different ones that I've still not received documents, and I checked back and actually there was one that was supposed to be delivered back in December that still hasn't been provided either. And I sent a note to the city clerk and the city manager 10 days ago on the 14th to follow up on those and have not heard a peep. So anyway, I'm just hoping that someone in the council can clarify the process and the legal responsibility to ensure that the city meets the state regulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, there are no other hands raised at this time. One hand just went up. And back down. Suzanne Moore, would you like to speak? Please state your name for the record.
Thanks for that. It was giving me trouble. Suzanne Moore. May is the month honoring both mental health and affordable housing, and it gives us the opportunity to acknowledge their intersection. There are many studies that show stable housing is correlated with better health outcomes and prolonged life. That's why it's important for each community to do its part to create safe and affordable housing. We are in a housing deficit. For every one unit of low-income housing, there's an estimated six essential workers who need it. In this pandemic, our housing deficit contributes to overcrowding and homelessness. It's been an extremely difficult winter. Unemployment in Silicon Valley is still more than double the pre-pandemic rate. California's low-wage workers are earning one-third less than in early 2020. A new report published by Kaiser Family Foundation in February of this year gave these findings that California has seen a steady and alarming increase in children's inpatient visits for suicide, suicidal ideation and self-injury, with 151% increase for children ages 10 to 14. That adults in households with job loss or lower income report nearly double the rate of symptoms of mental illness. And that essential workers in communities of color have been disproportionately impacted and report higher rates of anxiety and depressive disorder symptoms. We have solutions. We can create stepping stones to permanent housing, which would be truly lifesaving for our unhoused neighbors and those at risk for losing their homes. First, keep people housed. Ask our legislators to extend the eviction moratorium, encourage landlords to accept state funding for back rents, buy more time to outreach to tenants and landlords, and buy time for greater economic recovery. Second, use home key funding to create intermediate steps for permanent housing. Regionally, there are successful models of safe parking and transitional housing that have helped many find permanent housing. I'm encouraged that our city council passed a referendum to work with the county for safe parking program. Third, we should do our part and participate in updates of Pacifica's general plan, safety plan, and housing element. We are in dire need of very low to moderate income housing. Let's all do our part to promote a truly equitable COVID recovery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, there are no other hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment and bring it to council for council communications. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Big Stick.
Thank you, Mayor, and since it dovetails nicely with what Suzanne was just saying, the California Emergency Rental Assistance Program is working on getting legislative approval to cover 100% of back rent. This will hopefully lead more property owners to accept the assistance since they won't have to forgive 20% of what is owed. The program is prioritizing back rent from April 2020 through March of 2021, but it is now including April 2021 and May of 2021. Go to housingiskey.com, that is housingiskey.com, all one word, to apply. Or you can contact the Pacifica Resource Center at 650-738-7470 for help to apply if needed. So that's that. So in terms of economic development, I attended Chicken Cone Grand Opening the last Saturday. It was exciting to see people around the building to get in. It was a really successful opening, and I would encourage anybody to check out our new business and stimulate the economy a little. On June 8th, we have this huge fire awareness, fire prevention meeting coming up between 7 o'clock PM and 9 o'clock PM vis a vis Zoom. And if city manager would give a little bit more detail about the meeting and how people can find the leak, et cetera, please, 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 and everybody show up. This is such a big issue, especially with all these red flag warnings already in the season. We need everyone in the community to come to this program on June 8th to learn about how, as a community, we can try and prevent fire danger. Attended the EDC meeting on 5/11 as a person in the audience. It was really nice to have an opportunity to meet Yulia Carter in that setting, and I'm really excited for the city working with her. Attended the Pacifica Daily City Democrats Meeting. There was a, after that, a Communities United event in San Mateo. I had the honor of being in the audience there with Sue Beckmeyer as we attended that. Jackie Spear was speaking, Josh Becker, Dave Canapa. And the quote of the day was Asians are visible, just part and parcel with this movement to get away from bigotry and prejudice in our culture. I had the good fortune of attending the County of San Mateo Library JPA meeting. Thank you, Mike, for presenting me that opportunity. They talked about the phased reopening plan, the summer learning initiative. I learned something about the hotspots that the libraries are providing in digital circulation and all sorts of programs. I had no idea were going on before I attended the meeting, so I'm really excited when the meetings about getting a new library in our community start getting underway again because it's something we need to bring this many resources into our community. Just about out of time, but I was able to attend the Public Works Appreciation Week, and I want to say thank you to all Public Works. There have been events this week, and I was grateful to be able to attend one lunch, and some of our Public Works folks can really cook, I'll tell you. Emergency Preparedness, the police website, they, they have a bit on crisis intervention page that got updated, and wildfire preparedness through their National Natural Disasters tab again under the hazards part of the police website. And the next meeting there is June 16th, so thank you for giving me an extra minute to talk about that.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for hands.
Councilmember Vatalas had her hand up.
Physically had her hand up, not in the little white box that I'm looking at on that side of my screen.
I'll do, I'll do both for you. Okay, I attended the Fairmont Homeowners Association, which I'm going to do each month, and they have very good questions, and I'm always trying to get answers, which is great. I learn a little bit about them, they learn a little bit more. I attended the county meeting, which is great because we have great numbers, and happy to say that during the two weeks prior to that meeting, sorry, this is morbid, but we had no deaths in the county in two weeks from COVID, which is really a great thing. I went to the City and County Association of Governments Ledge this late of meeting, and a lot of the bills that we've been discussing are going to be two-year bills, they're going to be put off, and we'll see what happens to them. The regular meeting, we had an update on unmanaged lanes and many other things going on in the county. COVID questions with council with Mary. We had Amy Andonian and Mike Perez speaking about senior services and PBNR. So please watch that on YouTube. It's quite informative. And this Friday, we're having Don Cecil back from the San Mateo County Economic Development Association, who will speak to us. I also went to the Democrats and the opening of Chicken Cone. I waited in line for it to open in the beginning. So it was really nice talking to people in line. I quite enjoyed it. I went to a meet and greet for Carlos Bolanos, who's running for sheriff. The COVID Recovery Council was a, they call it it's like Fast Break. They did a recap of everything that they've done in the past year or since the beginning of COVID, which is so extensive. The, I went to the Flood and Sea Level Rise Committee, and they mostly talked about budget. And one of the committees that I'm on is Coma Creek, and they are folding Coma Creek into Flood Sea Level Rise. They also have two names for that, and the other one is One Shoreline, so if you ever hear that name, that is also Flood Sea Level Rise Committee. Okay, and that's it.
Question to Vatalas, Shoreline, does, does the Bay Shoreline, or does that also include us?
No, One Shoreline includes us. It's one shoreline that goes all the way around.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Who's next?
All right, I guess I'll go. I couldn't make the library meeting, so Tiger gave us the lowdown on the library meeting. I did attend the EDC meeting, and I've requested the city manager to put on the agenda in June some survey done with the local restaurants in terms of outdoor dining and regulations. And I think that would be interesting for the whole council to see that, so I requested the city manager to put that on the agenda for June. Also attended LaFco. There was really no big Pacifica issues in LaFco that need to bring attention to councils. And the biggest news for me was my daughter graduated from four years of college. You know, on her way to a master's program, so that's, that's it for me.
And not to belabor the point, Councilmember O'Neill, but what is her master's program in?
Library Science at the University of Washington in Seattle. She will be leaving IVL as the school librarian there.
That's so happy for her, very thrilled to have a new wonderful additional librarian in the world.
That was wonderful, thanks.
Okay, Mayor Protem, you're up.
Okay, I'm up. So I wanted to address what Erin brought up tonight, and I really appreciate that, actually, because at the housing meetings that I attended, and I attended Housing Our People Effectively, I attended the Mental Health Service Act Housing Initiative Task Force, and then I had a little conversation with council members from Redwood City, South San Francisco, and San Mateo about our RENA numbers and creating goals to to really look at how we can get our numbers, how we can produce, right? We need to produce. All of these different meetings talk about producing housing. We haven't, I haven't talked about preserving or protecting actually right now. So I really appreciate you bringing that up, and I'm going to see where we can fit that conversation in, and if we can't fit it in with those meetings, then perhaps we need to have a new meeting. So I really appreciate that. I went to the Commission on Aging, and we discussed the action plans for the different age-friendly cities. I attended the Joint Articulation Meeting, which is the school district, Pacifica School District, the water district in the city. So we heard a lot about the reopening of Pacifica School District and how that's going. I actually had to miss some meetings this, this past week. I missed the OSAC meeting and the Age Friendly Coalition meeting because I was in a week-long youth conference for my, my job, my employment. And so we had a really great conference with a whole bunch of youth attending every day, and it was a whole lot of work. So I apologize for not being able to get to all those meetings, but you know, it's sometimes it's worth it just to help all those young people. And then COVID questions with council. And then COVID questions with council, so thank you for bringing that up, Sue. And then I just wanted to really quickly thank all of the parents of Little League players because I've been hanging out at the Little League field a little bit and these parents are out there working the snack shack and they're getting, oh, it's, it's a beautiful thing. People are so happy to be out there playing baseball. So it's been really fun being out there.
Okay, thank you very much. My two weeks since our last meeting have been primarily focused on my job, which is in Pacifica Schools and has had a lot to do with our standardized testing over the last multiple weeks. Because with our reopening, we have, are in hybrid mode. So the student groups are split into half. And that doubles the amount of time it takes to do testing because you're only testing half the class at a time. All this during the return from a pandemic. And we find it surprising and we're making our way through it and we're nearly done. So I'm very pleased to report that. Yes, the United Communities United Meeting in San Mateo City Central Park in San Mateo, I think it's called, had never been to that park. Did not know they have a giant rose garden, which Councilmember Big Stick and I were, had an opportunity to visit right after the meeting. It was a very encouraging meeting and there were lots and lots of speakers. It was very clear that it was really driven, youth-driven, Mayor Protem. And it was really, really exciting to see that and see the political action, really. You know, the civic action, the engagement that was starting with those, with those young people. And lots of other council members there. So it's again, in person. I mean, it was just a unique experience, given everything we've been experiencing for the last year plus. I had an opportunity to have a very informative conversation with a local designer about a model for housing, individual housing that is very uniquely constructed involving the reuse of shipping containers and other materials like that. Look, you know, just a very preliminary informational meeting to learn about what they're doing. And this group that she's part of has been working with cities in our area and there is a 70 unit, 7-0 unit installation planned in Daly City with these units. So I'm hoping to have more information in some kind of venue. And I don't know, as, has, has come up already in council communications, housing, and as we heard from a public comment with Erin Macias, there are significant housing questions and issues. And it seems like we're really moving toward a forum of some kind or some kind of open discussion that will take shape as it will. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about ADUs because this is something that Councilmember O'Neill has really been leading the charge on. But I will just say that we've had difficulty and I'll ask for staff, please, to touch on this for the public and for the council and the public. We've had some challenge in getting our ADU ordinance through the Coastal Commission, which has prevented or significantly delayed the development of a certain number of ADUs. How many I don't really recall or know, I don't think I ever knew, but it's a lot. And it's been more than a year and there are, there is a future to it that hopefully staff can enlighten us a little bit about the timing issues and challenges there. There was one more thing I wanted to include. Sorry. Oh, the JPA meeting for the emergency, well, it's really the ambulance service with the, the JPA that for pre-hospital ambulance care met. And there will be more information forthcoming. It looks like there's some modification of the amount of budget that's being allocated to each city. And I'm uncertain about why that's so and need to check in with Chief Myers and City Manager Woodhouse to learn more about that. But the biggest news from that is the very technical, lots of people know it, I don't, change over from T1 lines for communication purposes to fiber, which is the current state of the art. And the T1 lines are like, in, in terms of this type of communication, it's, it's the equivalent of dial-up modems for those people on the Zoom or in the audience who know what that is. And in terms of ability, functionality and obsolescence. And so there is a long process that is going to be playing out for updating all of the stations for all of the cities, all the fire stations for all of the cities that are part of this joint powers agreement. And that will be happening over time. One thing that occurred to me is I want to get more information about the schedule because it's not in common for the coast to wait. And I think our buildings are pretty old and I hope the coast isn't going to wait to the last to be, you know, updated because it's certainly urgent. And that is all I have to share. If we can have staff report from the city manager.
All right. Sorry, can I just say one more thing? You talked about those container houses. About a year and a half or so ago, I went to see her specific container houses that were already built. They were at a hotel in South City. And it's pretty amazing because they definitely don't look like containers when they're done and they're very reasonably priced. Nice to walk through them and see them in person.
Looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you. Yeah, very interesting, really, really inspiring. Okay, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, council members, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. Just several brief updates. One is that the information about the June 8th wildfire preparedness activities call or workshop from seven to nine PM that night is available on the city's webpage, on the homepage, on one of the banners, as well as on the North County Fire Authority's webpage. And it'll be a comprehensive discussion, presentations about evacuation programs and plans and, you know, Zone Haven tool that's available and lots of other information. So definitely encourage the community to participate in that. The city's ADU ordinance is on the agenda for the Coastal Commission in June for their approval. So that's the update there. And thank you to planning staff for working through many of the delays and hoops that the Coastal Commission staff has, has created in that process. The, I did want to mention that we recently pushed out, I, I can't remember today was the deadline, but last week we pushed out to all the restaurants in Pacifica the, the final information and push for the federal restaurant revitalization program and the applications due for that. So hopefully many Pacifica restaurants have submitted for that. And finally, we, we did get a letter off to Congresswoman Eschew about requesting her support of Congresswoman Spear's support to the Army Corps of Engineers to fund our shoreline study of the Pacifica coast. So we'll be tracking that request and Congresswoman Spear is pushing for that aggressively. And that completes my updates.
Kevin, you also did send a letter requesting traffic study for weekends here?
Yes, actually, the, the, I finalized the letter today, co-signed, to be co-signed with the Half Moon Bay City Manager. So that'll be going off to the Congestion Management Agency to include from Highway 35 north of Pacifica all the way to the southern boundary of Half Moon Bay and include weekends in that, in that study.
Right, because right now they only check traffic Wednesdays AM and PM. They do not check it on weekends anywhere. Thank you.
All right. Do we want to have a short break before we turn to our consideration items? Yes, all right, it is eight twenty-four, let's return at eight twenty-eight. Two, three, four, five items before us tonight on our consideration. And the city manager has informed me that a presenter for the last item on item thirteen, who has had to attend multiple meetings for other cities that are involved in this, in this item, is on our call right now. And I would like to discuss rearranging the agenda to accommodate having her present and be available to answer questions and move that item up. Any objection?
So we would just need a motion and then a majority vote to move it to wherever the majority of the council wants to move it to. So we need a motion and a second and then a vote on the motion.
So moved.
And where would you like to move it to?
Oh, to right now, to first. I'm sorry.
It will become the new item. It will become nine and item nine will be item nine A.
I'd move that we move it to item nine.
This is item thirteen?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you're, you're making a motion to move item thirteen to become item number nine, is that correct, Sue?
And make the current item nine, item nine B. So that would be nine A.
Okay.
Thirteen will become nine A and nine will become nine B. That's.
That is correct.
I'll second the motion.
City clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vada Los.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And the vote to move item number thirteen to item number nine A and item nine to nine B has passed unanimously.
All right, then, our new item nine A is adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the County of San Mateo for continued provision of animal control services. And we have a presentation from Chief Stidle.
Well, Chief Stidle and the county animal control expert Lori Morton Fizell is brought to panelist mode. I'll kick this off with a brief introduction. And there's also a PowerPoint presentation that we'll provide. I'm really pleased to be bringing this to the council. A lot of work has gone into this selection for the next five years for animal control services. And as you can, as you'll see in the presentation, this is a longstanding collaborative service of all the 20 cities in San Mateo County, along with the county and the Peninsula Humane Society. And it was a competitive RFP process and it was a, a very fruitful negotiations process that really is reducing the cost and increasing the service levels that we'll be receiving. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Chief Stidle to run through the presentation. And then Ms. Morton Fizell is here to help answer questions as she knows any and all of the detail about animal control services that you might want to ask about. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager Woodhouse. Good evening, council members. I'm Dan Stidle, your chief of police. Next slide, please. And I'll begin like just giving you a little history. Animal control has been one of the longest-running regional shared services in San Mateo County. And since 1952, the county has contracted with the Peninsula Humane Society and SPCA, or as we will refer to tonight, PHS, for animal control field and sheltering services. Next slide, please. On January 15th, 2021, an RFP was released to 71 organizations for animal care, control and shelter services contractors serving San Mateo County. Two contractors did submit proposals on February 18th of 2021. Those are PHS as well as Partners in Animal Care and Compassion Pets in Need. Next slide, please. On March 4th of 2021, the proposals were evaluated by a group and reviewed by a committee comprised of nine reviewers. And the evaluation determined that while both proposals were acceptable, PHS was scored higher overall. Next slide, please. So contract negotiations with PHS began on March 24th. A negotiation team included the county manager, county council, county animal control manager and six city representatives, one of which was our own city manager, Kevin Woodhouse. Next slide, please. So negotiations conclude on April 3rd with the actual agreement being attached to the staff report as exhibit A. The new agreement will begin on July 1st of 2021 and will expire on June 30th of 2026. Next slide, please. So the budget for the five-year agreement is presented on this slide with the overall expenditures to be just a little bit over $32,500,000 for that five-year period. Next slide, please. So in collaboration with the PHS, the cities and county negotiating team, they were able to reduce the proposed budget that was submitted by PHS originally by $1.6 million over five years. And the negotiations also provided for an increase in service to the residents of the county from the original RFP. Overall, there will be a $577,950 Overall, there will be a five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollar decrease in contract costs over five years countywide when compared to the current contract, and again with additional services negotiated. Next slide, please. So the cities will continue to pay the county for administering the agreement. The first payment for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two will be seven hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. So the Pacifica, City Pacifica's share of the total contract for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is five point two four percent or a little over three hundred and seven thousand dollars, which includes our portion of that county administrative fee that I just spoke about. And for a breakdown of the fees, the five point two four percent, and how they arrive at three hundred and seven thousand dollars, you can see Exhibit B, which is attached to the staff report. Next slide, please. So the cost allocations are determined using a three-year average of usage, weighted forty-one percent on field service usage and fifty-nine percent on animal control shelter usage. The contract gives the city credit for each licensing and animal collected fees, revenue attributable, excuse me, to that particular city as a result of its own share of the cost. Next slide, please. So there's a laundry list of PHS services that are provided to the county and the cities under this contract. Some of them that our community members would be very familiar with, the animal rescue, assisting public safety agencies, including the Pacifica Police Department, when called upon, removing dead animals from public property, vet care, vaccination clinics, animal shelter services, investigation of animal bites and attacks, customer service provided at the county shelter, also euthanizing severely injured deer in the field, enforcing lease laws and local ordinances, and also dealing with dangerous animal permits and permit violations. So under, under the new contract, there's going to be, these are the additional terms that were negotiated that the city manager was speaking about. There will be increased reporting to the cities and counties to include fiscal reporting, annual fiscal or performance audits, and moving from four performance measures to thirty-six ways to evaluate the performance of PHS. Next slide, please. Also, in the new contracts, some of the times have changed in terms of response times by PHS to different calls for service. For example, priority one call would be immediate response to all emergency calls within one hour of receiving the call from the reporting party. Examples of those are a public safety agency request for immediate assistance. An example, that might be the police department in the, within the city limits is out with a dangerous animal or a dangerous situation, and we need the assistance of PHS immediately. Perhaps also when juveniles are present on school grounds, and there's a bat or any aggressive animal or animal posing risk to humans, and also request by a public safety official or fish and wildlife officer to respond to a mountain lion or escaped exotic animal. A priority number two response now would be responding without unnecessary delay within four hours of receiving the call from the reporting party. Under the current contract, the old contract, that response time was twenty-four hours. Now, example, that one might be a dog or cat in a trap, an animal that's in custody, meaning a stray confined animal, or a dead animal at a school between seven AM and eight PM within, or excluding holidays, of course. And priority three would be respond without unnecessary delay within a maximum of eighteen hours for that type of call. And again, under the current contract that we're operating on, there is a twenty-four-hour response time for these types of calls. And that, those types of calls include dead animal pickups and animal bite quarantines. Next slide, please. And with that, we'd be happy to entertain any questions or comments from City Council.
Thank you very much. Council members, if you have, oh, I see one. Councilmember O'Neil.
Um, Chief, okay, there's thirty-six measures of performance for, under the new contract up from four. What if they don't meet some of the performance standards? Is there, is there a penalty or repercussion or whatever?
Hi, this is Lori Morton.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see your square. I'm sorry.
Sorry. If you don't mind, I'll go ahead and take this one. And I will answer your question. I do want to start by, by saying thank you to your city manager, Kevin Woodhouse. He did an amazing job helping negotiate this contract. And as you can see, we've reduced the amount of cost to the cities in the contract. And he was at the meetings and he asked questions, so I want to thank you, Kevin. As far as your question, council member, the if a measure isn't met, they have thirty days in which to correct the measure. If that is not met, at that point, we can go into breach of contract. And the measures were put in place to make sure that all items of the contract are being met, as well as financial, field response, shelter activities, we're able to monitor the provider.
Okay, and I guess we, there has been some settlement, because I know several, I think before most people, the rest of the council was on the council, there was quite a lot of discussion about the cost of the new building you're building, and that's now been addressed by the county and PHS.
Yes, the, the, the shelter is built. It's a beautiful facility, and after COVID, I'd love to give all of you a tour. The way that that is being funded is the cities have thirty years in which to pay back the loan for the buildout of the shelter, but the county owns and the cities own the building and the land.
Okay, and then another question that I've, over the years, one of the biggest issues I've had people call me about is a dead animal on private property. And the issue, they understand that, you know, we can't pick it up or anything like that, because it's like subsidizing private property. However, there seems, I have been told, I've not heard it myself, that there's no referral as to like, who do you call? You know what I mean? Recology won't do, pick up whatever. Who do you call? And I was wondering, can you guys start either picking it up for a fee for the, for the person or referring them to somebody that will pick up a dead deer on private property?
Yeah. There are two companies currently that we refer residents to that can pick up dead deer on private property. The Humane Society will pick up dead stray animals on private property. And the owner, if their animal dies at their house, they can actually call and pay a fee to have that animal picked up. But you're right, if a dead wildlife dies on someone's property, they have to contract with this, this agency. And I can forward that to city manager Woodhouse, and that can be put up on the city website.
Oh, okay, but you're, you guys actually have a company to refer to, because, okay, now, okay, all right, that was, that is, addresses my concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, and then Caltrans handles the freeway, the highway.
Okay.
Other questions from council or comments? Thank you very much for being here to answer our questions.
Very welcome. Thank you.
Seeing any, I'm going to see if there's anything in public comment, and then I did have one additional follow-up question. And in public comment, in the attendees list, I'm not seeing any hands, but our deputy city clerk, I think, know something different?
I don't see any hands raised. There, Beckmeyer.
Okay, then we'll close public comment on this item. Um, being where we are in Pacifica here with our open space and such, we do have a number of, and in this last year, I think, an increasing number of concerns and calls about mountain lions. And I note in, on packet page one sixty-six, under priority one, well, before that, there's an addition or changes to field service officers' responses and specific item with regard to mountain lions. Could you illuminate this information for, for our, for the council and also for the public?
Absolutely, and, and I agree with you. I'm a Pacifica resident, and I think the, the mountain lions are getting very bold in this area. Fish and wildlife are very aware of what's happening, not only on our peninsula, but also on Santa Cruz and beyond. What we negotiated with the Humane Society is if a mountain lion is a threat to the public and a public or a police officer is on the scene, they will also respond to the scene. They will wait on this, at the location until fish and wildlife can arrive. And the reason we did that is a lot of times fish and wildlife have a very long estimated time of arrival. So we wanted to get them on the scene because they have more knowledge about animal behavior, and it's kind of a three-pronged approach. It's the police department, the Humane Society, and then fish and wildlife to handle the situation. But it does have to be, you know, a life-threatening situation. If they're walking down a trail, if, you know, in front of the house, not harming anyone, then there's no response. But this is new to the contract, and I'm really pleased that we were able to get it in there.
Thank you very much for explaining that.
Okay.
Nothing further from council?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. I adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the County of San Mateo for continued provision of animal control services.
One second. I heard a motion by councilmember O'Neil and a second by Mayor Pro Tem Beer for item number nine A, formerly thirteen. Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vada Los.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to, thank you for being here. Moving on to item nine B, introduction of an ordinance to add a new Article Six litter containers for commercial properties within Chapter Five, Garbage Collection and Recycling of Title Six, Sanitation and Health, Regarding Litter Management at Commercial Properties. The proposed actions to move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pacifica to add a new Article Six, everything I just read, to establish container requirements at commercial properties and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. We have, I believe, staff member Baptista? Is that right?
No, Josh Montemayor.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Hi, good evening. Hi, good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Pro Tem Beer, and members of the City Council. As was introduced this evening, I will be giving you an introduction to adding a new Article Six into the Pacifica municipal code titled Litter Containers for Commercial Properties. The City Council may recall that the issue of litter management was discussed during City Council goal setting on March sixth earlier this year. And with the expansion of outdoor dining and shopping centers during the pandemic, litter has become a widespread issue in some of our popular areas around the city. So the council took an interest in having staff propose an ordinance to improve litter management. And this does come at an opportune time to consider this proposed ordinance in light of outdoor dining, now that we're going into the summer months, and with tourism picking back up. So some brief discussion about the ordinance. This will apply to all private, commercial property owners, and will require the owners to take regulatory action to address litter problems on their property. And this is why the city is proposing receptacle standards with regards to location, size, spacing, et cetera, so that commercial property owners, where they sell food or they generate a lot of food waste due to one-time footwear use, to give them regulations to mitigate the effects of litter generated by pedestrians who might be patrons and accessing, accessing the public areas and just disposing their waste everywhere. Again, this was something that the City Council discussed as a priority of the last goal-setting workshop to be adopted for the end of this fiscal year. And the ordinance, as proposed by staff, intends to make trash cans easier for pedestrian access. And these requirements will address ongoing litter issues, again, by requiring commercial property owners to install and maintain the trash can, so making it basically easily accessible and convenient for pedestrian use. So just to summarize, the ordinance and brevity, the standards basically requires providing and maintaining litter containers for pedestrian use. And these would include regulations such as locating litter containers ten feet from any public entrance or exit from a restaurant or food vendor, also locating them in intervals at three hundred to three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty feet along pedestrian walkways and commercial retail centers. In addition, the ordinance calls out the maintenance of these litter containers, providing requirements for properties that involve outdoor dining, enforcement, violation, and penalty. So these standards were developed from research and best practices that we've done across other cities and towns, but in general, there really isn't that many prescriptive standards out there. And on litter management specifically for commercial properties, so staff was able to at least provide you this recommendation this evening with, based on research and a handful of guidebooks that we found. Again, after doing our research, this is the best recommendation that we can give for practices at shopping centers. That's how we came up with the proposed ordinance this evening. So just to wrap it up, the ordinance is intended to be very simple and easy to understand. This issue of litter management comes at an opportunistic time in light of the summer months coming ahead of us. And before I finish my oral report, I just wanted to point out two edits that need to be made before we do the first reading, which is to add under the definition section, "commercial building," quote unquote, it means a structure in which at least fifty percent of the floor space is used for commercial activities. And secondly, to clarify, under section six, that six dash five point six zero four C, adding the term pedestrian, the amended section would read as follow, quote, "needs to be amended," I'm sorry. Litter containers shall not be located in a manner that impede pedestrian accessibility to the commercial building or along the pedestrian walkways within the commercial center, end quote. So that's just to throw in another term of pedestrian, just to make it clear. This concludes our presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm looking for any questions from council. Mayor Pro Tem?
Hi, Josh. Thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. Can you just like, simply like, explain to me that, like, so there's very small businesses, right, that serve food? And then there's larger ones. So what, what does that mean for our smaller businesses?
So these standards would apply to any size businesses, wherever there's a food establishment. If they're serving food, whether it's prepared, even if it's a restaurant, or say you're walking out of Safeway, anything that has, like, they're preparing food applies to those businesses. So I'll be at large or small.
And I'd like to make a, a small clarification, if I may. This is Tina, where my sister assistant, city manager and planning director. I do want to clarify that these regulations are a requirement of the property owner, not necessarily the small, the businesses that you may be thinking of. And, you know, I, I don't know what kind of trickles down to them in terms of perhaps their, their rent, but really, this is a requirement of property owners of commercial property who lease to food businesses, that they provide their tenants and the customers of their tenants proper, you know, receptacles to take care of their, their trash and any recycling. So this is really any enforcement associated with this ordinance would be directed towards property owners, not, not to the businesses. And if they have smaller storefronts, you know, there could be can, you know, placement of cans that actually serve multiple businesses. And not, and not necessarily just, just like, kind of one right outside the door of each one.
Thank you. That really clears it up for me. Thanks.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Um, is there any provision? Okay, so like, I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but like Chicken and Cone just opened up. Or the, the grocery store in Valamar and the talk Or the, the grocery store in Valmar and the talk, the, the Mexican place in Valmar. Okay, you buy your food and you're walking down Raina Del Mar and in about two blocks, you're through eating. So you're holding your containers, right? Is there any provision for, that they would have to put a bag or a container of some sort two blocks away? Because like my grandmother used to live near McDonald's and she used to get all the garbage from McDonald's two blocks away from the McDonald's. While on site, people were still eating. You know what I mean? So there's no provision that the, they would have to put a can two or three blocks away?
So Josh can, can, and provide maybe the details, but I, I believe there's a section of the ordinance that for areas of a shopping center where there may not be food, there needs to be an, a garbage can at, at intervals, but they're larger intervals. They're more like three hundred foot intervals. So that as you get farther away, or maybe you're in a shopping center that has less food establishment, but perhaps you still need to provide garbage cans that they're, they are there. Unfortunately, there's nothing we can do once you walk off the property, of course.
Okay, so like in the second block of Lindemar Boulevard won't, won't have a garbage can there. And then what about if you're on Palmetto? Let's say we have a fast food restaurant open on Palmetto of some, and I'm talking about near the resource center or whatever. John's a sign guy. And we have a provision in here that says you can't, you have, you can't block pedestrian access. Would they, they would still need to put a garbage can somewhere on Palmetto within the three hundred feet?
So this, this ordinance is, is drafted to regulate shopping centers, so private property shopping centers. And I think that if there was the need for a garbage can on Palmetto or on any public street, that we would work cooperatively with Public Works to determine appropriate location for that garbage can. And I would hope that the business would have a garbage can right next to their door as you exit, hopefully.
Right. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments from council? Okay, let's have a public comment on this item.
We have hands going up. Our first hand raised is from Jessica Rabbit. Please state your name for the record. Jessica Rabbit, Rabbit, you're our next speaker.
Video, I was like, people congregating and leaving trash. You know, it's like, it's inevitable. Even like great people accidentally leave trash at the beach and stuff like that, but.
Well, no, but that's the point is that now, now because of your voice, they're talking.
Thank you, a deputy city clerk.
We'll go now to our next speaker, Reverend Terry. Please state your name for the record.
Terry Okelberger, and I'm reading the ordinance and I'm seeing that it says in outdoor dining areas that restaurants need to have a garbage can. If they have table service, then it seems like that's going to be a more of a, in the way than a help. So if you're referring to small businesses that are independent, maybe you mean unattended outdoor service areas or something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, there are no other hands raised at this time.
Okay, then we'll close public comment, come back to council. And could I, yes, council member O'Neil?
Um, I was just gonna say, as I, I called Chris Porter from Recology today just to see what her experience was. Being she started picking up the garbage cans for the city recently. And she says, and I was really kind of shocked that from January first to, to, to May first of this year, garbage goes to something up something like eighty-seven percent in April point, from sixteen tons to thirty-something tons. And I was shocked to think that and that the most, north end is mostly RV dumping. People that live in RVs dumping them in the city cans and stuff. But I just thought that was the, the eighty-seven percent increase was kind of shocking to me. That's all.
Uh, council member Vatterlos?
Um, there's also excessive dumping of items, large items, mattresses, et cetera. And I talked to Chris Porter too, and she said that this is costing the, the taxpayers about five thousand dollars in fees to get rid of all the stuff that's dumped. So sort of like the caller was trying to say was, you know, if everybody would please just pick up their stuff. Uh, Recology has a, a system to pick up large items. And please don't put residential garbage in the public cans. Because they actually look at it and if you have something in there that's indicating who you are, they will bill you. So do not put public garbage in the cans. Sometimes our can in Rockaway, it'll be totally empty and you walk by it twenty minutes later and it's totally full of black plastic garbage can bags. So you know that it's personal dumping. Please don't do it.
Thank you, council member Vatterlos. Um, I believe that Chris Porter is on this call. And so I'd like to, I'm not sure, city attorney, if I need to reopen public comment or if we can bring her on as a panelist. Because since we're discussing ecology and the implications for ecology of this policy and this ordinance, I'd like to have her make a couple of comments in response.
So you would ask the council if they want to open up the public comment section? And then if they do, if a majority does, then you would just open public comments again for one speaker?
Council members, can you give me a thumbs up or head nod if you think that's all right? All right, looks unanimous. Then let's please reopen public comment. Deputy city clerk, thank you.
Certainly, Chris's phone has been enabled. I think she should be able to speak now.
Good evening. This is Chris Porter. I'm the general manager of Recology of the Coast. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm very happy with this ordinance going through because I think it's important for the citizens of Pacifica that the businesses that are generating the trash takes ownership of this. And by ownership, I mean takes the responsibility to pay for the disposal. In a couple of the shopping centers, there are very, very minimal cans. And this is something that Recology has found since we've taken over picking up all the city cans. And just trash is getting really out of hand. So again, by the businesses taking ownership of their trash, it will mitigate the cost to the ratepayers.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Yes, um, did you have anything further to add on that item, Chris, or on anything else regarding this ordinance?
I, I think it's a very positive step. I've been working with the city on this and really we kind of had a date of Memorial Day to have this completed. I'm very happy to see that we're close to that date. As, as a couple of the council people have said, I did speak with many of you that the, since January one, where we, when Recology began to pick up the city cans as well as the abandoned trash around town, the, the trash in these cans has gone from a little over sixteen tons in one month, in the month of January, to over thirty tons in the month of April. And that's, and this isn't even our really busy time yet. So we have got to do something just to keep the city clean. And Recology has been working very hard to, you know, pick up abandoned trash, to do whatever we can to assist the city and in our joint effort to keep this city litter free. So this is a very positive move forward.
It really is. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna, unless there's anything, any additional caller, no on the public comment, deputy city clerk, no? Since it's reopened? No? Okay, we're gonna re-close it. And I'd just like to thank Chris Porter for her work with us on this item and bringing it to our attention. I mean, truly, it was the council's direction because we understand the importance of it. We've certainly heard from Lynn Adams and others with the Beach Coalition for a long time about this issue. And so I am really, really pleased that we got it done. Thank you, staff, given all that you have on your plates. Council member Big Stick?
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to move to waive the first reading and introduce, introduce by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pacifica to add a new article six litter containers for commercial properties within chapter five garbage collection and recycling of title six sanitation and health of the Pacifica municipal code to establish container requirements at commercial properties with the edits to the ordinance suggested by management analyst Montemayor and finding the ordinance exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Second.
Moved by council member Big Stick as amended with a second by Vatterlos. Council member Big Stick?
Yes.
Council member Vatterlos?
Yes.
Council member O'Neil? Council member O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer?
Yes.
And Mayor Beckmeyer?
Yes.
And that item as amended passes unanimously.
Very, very good. Glad to have that done. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to item ten. The subject of this item is COVID-19 hazard pay for grocery and drugstore workers. The recommended action is to discuss the topic of local hazard pay ordinances for grocery and drugstore workers and provide direction to the city manager. This is a discussion item and I was just gonna call on you, council member Big Stick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I do have a conflict of interest in regards to this item, I will need to recuse myself. I am a food clerk at Safeway and essentially what you will be discussing tonight directly affects whether or not I might have a temporary pay raise. So I'm going to recuse myself. Before I do, city attorney, am I allowed to give any public comment?
No, because of the conflict, you are not allowed to make a statement from the public.
Thank you very much. And so with that, I will mute my microphone and turn off my video as we discuss amongst yourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So Mayor Pro Tem, do you want to lead off?
Um, sure. Yes, why not? Um, I realize that this has been done in, in a few different cities in our county. You know, it's kind of like late in the game, but I thought it would be a really good thing to discuss if maybe we can just see if we can get some help out to, to as many folks as we can while we can. So, yeah, that, that's why I brought it to council and I look forward to the discussion.
Okay, and city manager, thank you very much. City manager, did you want to give us some highlights?
Yeah, sure. I'll provide a, a brief description of this item. Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer and council members. The, during the pandemic and then most recently in actually February and March of this year of 2021 in San Mateo County, several cities have discussed this issue about whether they should adopt urgency ordinances for limited periods of time, requiring hazard pay for frontline employees at larger grocery stores and drugstores due to the employee's degree of exposure during the pandemic. And as, as Mayor Pro Tem Beer mentioned, she requested this item be agendized for the council's discussion. I want to make it very clear that what's, what's not on the agenda tonight is actually the consideration of an ordinance. This is the council's first discussion to determine whether you want city staff to spend, spend the time and money to develop an ordinance and bring it back to the council for consideration at the next council meeting, which would be June fourteenth. In San Mateo County regarding these kinds of ordinances, five of the cities have adopted ordinances in the February, March, and April timeframe. The other fourteen cities excluding Pacifica have not taken up this discussion. And two cities and the county took up the discussion but did not pass such an ordinance. Generally, the, the provisions of these types of ordinances are an incremental pay increase for a designated limited period of time during, during this COVID emergency. And then there are lots of other variables that do relate in the ordinances. And most of the ordinances define what the employer parameter is. And often it's defined as a national retail grocer or drugstore company with anywhere from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty or more employees nationwide. And the varying durations adopted by other cities are from ninety to a hundred and twenty days. And as Mayor Pro Tem Beer mentioned, you know, in, at this, at this time in the emergency, the county is in the yellow tier. The, beyond the blueprint from the state is, is going to be coming into effect on June fifteenth. And the, another important consideration for the council to, to keep in mind is that the California Grocers Association has sued many cities in the state over this type of ordinance. So there is legal risk if the, if the city were to consider adopting an ordinance and adopting an ordinance. There, there is some legal risk associated with this type of ordinance. If, if the council, council after, after, you know, questions and discussion wanted to directly bring back an ordinance, I'd be seeking input along, about the following types of provisions. The amount of hazard pay to be included in the ordinance, the definition of covered employee, sorry, covered employer, the definition of covered employee, the provisions that relate to exceptions for collective bargaining agreements, the duration of the urgency ordinance, and enforcement provisions. I think I'll stop there and answer any questions that, that we may know. And the city attorney Kenyon can also participate and chime in with answers as necessary.
Kevin, I, I see your recommended action is discuss the topic of a local hazard pay ordinance for groceries. But all the other on the sheet you provided says urgency and you just mentioned vocal. Am I correct in that an urgency ordinance would need four of the four votes to pass as an urgency ordinance?
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Michelle. I just wanted to clarify that for my.
That wasn't my voice. That was the city attorney.
Yeah, I know. I, I could tell.
I apologize.
It's her, it's her vacation. She's more relaxed now. I understand.
Jumping right in.
Yes. Just to get in the groove. Okay.
Council member Vatterlos?
And what other stores are included? Are small, like Seven-Elevens or there, there, we do have independent grocery, like Grocery Outlet, which is independently owned, Rite Aid. Are those stores also considered in this?
So, so it would depend on how the covered employer is defined. In, in some of the other ordinances, as I mentioned, they're defined as a certain size, five hundred to seven hundred and fifty employees nationwide. And so perhaps a Seven-Eleven type store would fall into that. It's a question for the definition about whether an independent grocery store that might have other independents of the same brand would be covered by that. And I don't have an answer to that question or what other ordinances say. We would have to research that more depending on the council's direction.
And if we were to pass this ordinance, would the restaurant workers come to us? Would the city workers come to us? Would other essential employees come to us and say, hey, you're demanding that these people get raises. What about us? We were essential workers. We worked through this too. So just, it's kind of a rhetorical question. Because obviously you don't know the answer, but it's just a question.
I have a question, Kevin, about the retroactive pay. Could you explain that a little bit? What other cities have done it?
So I am only aware of one city that has done retroactivity. But we haven't, you know, read all the ordinances statewide. I think I mentioned in the report, there might be 15 or so cities statewide that have done this. So I can't speak to all those. I know in San Mateo County, there's only one city, South San Francisco, I believe, that did retroactivity. And they adopted the ordinance in March, and they made it retroactive to a February date when the city council first began discussing the topic.
I would be, city attorney, is it possible for us to make something retroactive beyond the date of passage?
Well, I think to the point that city manager Woodhouse raised about to the date when the council first discussed it, the concept would be, it could be retroactive to the date when the entity that is the subject of the ordinance had reasonable notice of the likelihood that the ordinance would be put in place. So I would say that it would depend on when the council gave direction to staff to prepare the ordinance. It would be retroactive to that date, and I think that might possibly be legal. But to go retroactive, you would, retroactivity in general is not allowed for acts which were not illegal at the time that they performed the act. So that's why retroactivity in general is not easily done. It can be done, but the instances where I've seen it done effectively is when the council has put those entities on notice, clear notice, that, you know, we are going to be coming back at this date to adopt this ordinance, and it will be retroactive to this date, from this date.
Okay, so would tonight's agenda be considered the act of notice that we're?
It only, it depends on what direction the council gives. It depends on how clear the direction is. So I can't answer that question.
Okay, so it's depending on the direction of the discussion.
Correct.
Okay. Public comment?
I have a question, although, you know what, let's do public comment. And then I will ask my question because there may be other questions beyond within the public that are brought up in the sphere of the public comment. And our deputy city clerk will assist us with that.
Our first speaker tonight is Colin User 7788. Please state your name for the record. You can press star six to unmute. There you are. You are unmuted. Go ahead, Colin User 7788.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished Pacifica City Council. Thank you for taking the time to discuss this possible consideration regarding this much-needed ordinance. My name is Michael Frehna, and I reside at 712 Arlene Way. Been a Pacifica resident for 58 years. I, along with our staff, represent 30,000 unionized workers. UFCW Local 5, along with 648, would like to speak on this hazard pay this evening. This is the same issue that 18 other municipalities in our jurisdiction have had the foresight and temerity to tackle and pass. As you are acutely aware, retail, grocery, and drug are one of the few sectors that have done extremely well during the pandemic. Just to give you some perspective here, some of our employers have gone the extra mile to recognize unique and precarious positions that our workers have been put in since this virus took place. The appreciation pay, as it was dubbed, was offered when coronavirus began its devastation. Some companies paying as much as $3.50 over contracted rates. No large retailers in Pacifica have followed suit. These retail workers, which are an integral part of our community, as well as being our friends, neighbors, family, have stood bravely and continue to stand, serving this community day in and day out. These workers did not and do not have the ability to work from home in a virus-free, safe environment. They were and continue to be on the front lines with the same fears we all have regarding thoughts of contracting and spreading the virus to friends and loved ones, along with the larger percentage chance of doing just that. Since COVID took hold, I've been sent several videos from our Pacifica stores of union members in heated verbal altercations with customers that refuse to social distance or have the basic courtesy to wear a mask, which is unconscionable. This is still happening today. Ask yourselves if you'd be comfortable without wearing a mask in public right now. I am not. Our members are masked all shift long and work in check stands which offer minimal protection and the perimeter departments like the meat, deli, and bakery, where social distancing appears to be a myth that stores are reluctant to enforce for fear of lost sales or possibly insulting and offending a customer. Local 5, in partnership with our sister local 648, urged the council to strongly consider passing out ordinance for these hard-working retail clerks. These workers are in the store. They're there every day. They stock the shelves for your parties, your birthdays, your anniversaries, graduations, et cetera. They are the last ones to leave the stores well after you, and only then can they take off their masks. Please remember what a large part these workers play in all of our lives. Please don't forget them in their time of need. Local 5 has been instrumental in helping various city, other city councils craft ordinances that make sense. And we stand at the ready to assist any way necessary larger retailers located in our town that enjoy our consumer dollars should take care of the employees that do the difficult hazardous work for them each and every day. Thank you for your consideration regarding this matter.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Richard Hedges. He'll be followed by Colin User 3126. Please state your name for the record.
Richard Hedges. Thank you very much, Mayor Beckmeyer and city council members. I'm asking you today to consider passing this ordinance at some future date. It's very important for our members. I've worked in the industry for years. I'm now retired. But I plead for our people who have been sped upon, been pushed and punched, and in two states and various stores have been shot over mask-wearing. We've had over 100,000 members nationally contract the virus. That's over 10% of our members. And we've had 600 die. No one should die going to work. This is truly hazardous pay. Construction workers who work high get hazard pay or extra pay in their paychecks. And so I'm urging you for 90 to 120 days to give hazard pay to the workers in your city. This is not just union workers. It's all workers. So just to give you an example, there's a small regional chain, Luckys, who have stores in the valley and in the Bay Area who have been paying hazard pay without being asked to, to their workers. Trader Joe's pays it. Sees Candy pays it now that they're open. So I'm asking you to make this multinational company, Safeway, who's owned by a private equity company that's multinational, to pay hazard pay to their workers that have done so much to make them the profit that they're making. Just to give you how profitable this industry is, when they buy a million dollars of the groceries to sell, just in time, ordering usually means that they're going to turn that over every week. And so that's a tremendous amount of money on invested capital for merchandise. And it's gone up by 25% during the pandemic. So at least please share some of this money with the people who have actually made them possible to have these profits. Again, I ask you to do what you would want done for you if you were working in these stores, putting yourself at risk. Thank you.
Thank you.
We go now to Colin User 3126. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Edna Doggett. I'm a member of the United Food and Commercial Workers Labor Union, asking the council to please vote for hazard pay in Pacifica. A mere $5 extra per hour for those who have worked throughout this pandemic to make sure that everyone has had access to basic necessities of food and other supplies is the small price to pay for these companies that have, by the way, shown record profit during this pandemic. Without your intervention, these companies will not voluntarily share these record profits with the workers who have endured the stress and uncertainty of exposure during this deadly virus. These workers deserve this additional pay for the health risks they have been exposed to and are currently being exposed to when interacting with the public. Please vote for hazard pay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Colin User 0091. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is Christian Prada. I also am from UFCW Local 648, representing the workers of the grocery industry. This hazard pay is actually gonna help a lot of the employees who spent this entire year spending monies on additional protective gear, additional monies on disinfectants, alcohol, hand sanitizers, and probably extra money for utilities to decontaminate all the clothes they wear from day to day, day in, day out. I ask the city council to pass the hazard pay when they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any other hands raised.
All right, then.
Oh, one hand went up. Colin User 7709, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Beckmeyer and council members. My name is Dan Larson, and I am the president of UFCW Local 648, and we represent the essential workers that work in the grocery stores. Our members have been on the front line since this pandemic began. And while the CDC and the governor believes that lifting restrictions, excuse me, the lifting restrictions regarding mask-wearing is warranted for those vaccinated. It does not for our members. It puts our members directly in the line of danger. We know not everyone not wearing a mask is vaccinated, and not wearing a mask puts our members in danger. We ask the council to pass the hazard pay to show that we care and appreciate the dangers our members face day in and day out. Please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't see any hands.
All right, then we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. I had a question for the city attorney. And it has to do with the issue of retroactivity and the risk of legal action. In general, it seems like, based on the fact that have been sued who have passed this, that there's risk of legal action.
Correct.
It seems as though, according to the staff report, it seemed largely under the Equal Protection Clause and National Labor Relations Act were the chief areas. But it seems like, and I don't know if this is true, there's an additional layer of potentially risk with the retroactivity. And I wanted to know if I'm proceeding that to be, if that's accurate, or I'm just thinking it is true.
Well, I should clarify that with regard to the challenges, potential legal challenges to the ordinance, there are, you know, a number of issues that are associated with the hazard pay ordinance. Specifically with regard to retroactivity, that raises a particular issue of due process, namely notice. And so that's related to my points earlier in response to Councilmember O'Neal's questions that the only way we could even consider implementing retroactivity is if there was clear notice as to exactly what the council intends to prohibit or mandate at the time that they adopt the ordinance and at the time that they make it effective. Generally, all laws need to be prospective, not retroactive. And so that's the prevailing theory with regard to retroactivity, that it is not allowed. There are some instances where it can be allowed, but those are few and far between. So I would say that in general, the council would not be looking to make it retroactive to, you know, for months. It would be basically for a few weeks at most. Because it would be for the time period within which the council gave clear direction on an ordinance and the particulars of that ordinance so that a reasonable person could understand what those provisions would be. That is likely not to occur, really, until you have an ordinance in place. So that's why generally, retroactivity is disfavored.
Okay. Okay. Councilmember O'Neal.
Okay, Michelle, city attorney. I would think one of the first things we need to decide if we want to move forward with this is there's two ways we can go with either an urgency ordinance, which would require four votes, or a regular ordinance, which, given that there is four of us, would require three votes, right? Because 2-2 would be no action taken. Am I correct under those assumptions?
Well, I would say that it's important to remember that first and foremost, what are your findings for needing the hazard pay ordinance? And generally, what most communities are finding is that there is an urgent need to adopt this ordinance, and so it should be done urgently, which requires an urgency ordinance without a second reading. If you are not going to be going down that route, then we need to come up with findings to support this ordinance that we are saying there's no urgency to it, which a regular ordinance would require an introduction and then waiting of a minimum of seven days, and then at most, a second reading. And then after that second reading, then another 30 days for it to become effective. So if that's the route that the council's going, then the council would be saying that there's no urgency to adopting this ordinance. So the quandary is, on the one hand, the council, a lot of councils have adopted these hazard pay ordinances in an urgency fashion. And so the findings are made that we need to take action immediately, and it goes into place quickly. If you're saying it's going to go into place after a longer period of time, then we need to focus on, okay, why, two months from now, should this hazard pay ordinance go into effect? So the findings would be different for each ordinance. So I want to make that clear. So the findings would be different for each ordinance, so I want to make that clear.
Right, but my concern is looking at the calendar. June fifteenth is our next council meeting and that's when the city manager said staff would come back with an ordinance. If, if the direction of the council is to come back with an ordinance. June fifteenth is the heavens are opening up and so is California. So to me, if we want an urgency ordinance, that could become effective. June, June fifteenth, or if we decide to go retroactive to today, back to today, right? But a local ordinance, if we would have to adopt new findings. Based on what the governor's gonna say June fifteenth, correct? So I'm trying to get exactly what, what findings and stuff we need to come out with to come to an end product.
Well. The findings will depend upon what the council is, is desiring to do. So, so if the council. I can help the council create findings, but, but we need to, staff needs to understand what the council is trying to. What is the issue that the council is trying to resolve? So if the council, you know, if the council wants to adopt an ordinance. Based on simply the information that you have in front of you. Then you need to give staff that direction and then we will be able to determine. You know, what that ordinance will look like and what are the findings that we need to make? But first we need direction from the council, just in terms of. You know, really, does the council, does a majority of the council favor? A hazard pay ordinance? And if so. What does that ordinance look like? Do you want it to be an urgency ordinance? Because at that point, then you need to decide, do you want, do we have four votes for that ordinance? Or if not, what are the ills that you're trying to correct? By adopting a longer term effective ordinance? I mean, to an ordinance that goes into effect after a longer period of time.
And if it's an urgency ordinance, we would have to have something like the other cities have of a ninety day effective, one twenty, whatever. So we would have to come up with some sort of line demarcation a hundred and twenty days ahead, right? That if this happens. The ordinance ends in a hundred and twenty days, is that true? Is it, am I correct in that?
Well. I believe that the council can provide direction on, 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 on that. I'm not sure you need to give us the specific dates. But, but yes, that, that is what most cities are doing is providing. End dates to the requirement for hazard pay.
Okay, okay, well, just to be first off, I would favor and or I favor a hazard pay ordinance. I would favor urgency since that is. You know, most appropriate. I think the, I think, you know, given the, the, given how crowded safe. I have seen Safeway during this time, I think the five dollars an hour is appropriate. And I would be, and I would base it on the thread, the. The case of. How many cases we've had in San Mateo County and how we have floated up and down in different tiers. Okay, and I was gonna find that part of the, so I've said my piece and I'll gonna look at the staff report for more references here.
Uh, councilmember Vavlos.
Um, again, this is a really difficult situation. Um, I think that everyone should get hazard pay who worked hard. Um, like I said, the garbage workers, the restaurant workers, all of those people worked too. I'm also concerned about a lawsuit. We are stretched already based on that. And I would hate to see that happen again to us trying to help people out. The. I just, I don't know, I, and it's, and it's hard because if I say no, I'm gonna look like a horrible person. Because I said no and, and, and that's really difficult. And I was just wondering, I know that this sounds kind of corny, but if we could write a strongly worded. Letter to Safeway saying that we think, we feel that they should give their employees hazard pay. Without going through an ordinance, without getting sued. If that would even move their minds one bit, I have no idea. So I'm done for now.
I hear crickets from Safeway. And basically, we're talking about three Safeways and two Rite Aid is what we're talking about here.
Yeah, it's definitely the large stores who've made a lot of money in this during this time. And you know, one of the callers said, you know, lifting the mandate on masks doesn't make it. Any better for these workers because they're still, they're still gonna be the possibilities. Cause we don't know who's vaccinated, right? And so there's still stressful interactions that they're gonna be having with our public. And some of the ordinances that I looked at were ninety days, not a hundred and twenty. So I think that's what I was, what I was looking at was the ninety day one. So I would be, I, I would really want to have an urgency ordinance. Looking at ninety days, five dollars an hour. And then there's, there's plenty of descriptions and. And details in, in other ordinances like there, I've been looking at the one from Daily City. So there's plenty of words or wording we can use from their ordinance if we were to go that way.
Um, I have a question for Michelle and for our city attorney in regard to collective bargaining. Collective bargaining is referred to twice in our staff report. Once on page one forty three and once on page one forty four. And in, on page one, packet page one forty three, it's in the paragraph that has to do. With the lawsuit from the California Grocers Association. And the relationship of. The collective bargaining process to the National Labor Relations Act is the question that I have. It sounds like it's contract law. And I, so I want to understand that piece because on packet page one forty four, where the bullet points are. The information that city attorney and staff would be asking for involve amount of hazard pay. Definition of covered employer employee exception for collective bargaining agreements. So how, what does that mean on that bullet point? And, and how does that relate to the law and to? To regulations, national regulations?
In, in, for the city's perspective, and I'm trying to find that, that reference that you're referring to. That was on page, packet page one forty two?
One forty three, it's in the one, well, if you count the bullet points, one, two, three, fourth paragraph on page, packet page one forty three. The paragraph begins in considering this type of ordinance.
I can, I can begin, city attorney Canyon.
Oh, thank you, I'm still looking for that reference, thank you.
One of the, one of the legal concerns in some of the other suits is that this type of directive interferes.
Oh.
With the collective bargaining agreements that the union employees have with their employer. And so some of the ordinances have, I believe, decided to exclude those that are represented by collective bargaining agreements. From the hazard pay. In order, in order to reduce that legal risk.
Correct, that, that's another legal risk that is associated with adopting an ordinance that could theoretically interfere. With other rights, contractual rights between the employer and the employee. And so that is what that is in reference to. Which could be another exposure if, if we don't take care to address that. Does that answer your question?
That'll answer my question and that does, you know, from my understanding, rule out. If that we were to recommend that, which I would want anything that gives us as much cover as possible legally. So that would be a number one for me. And that includes a whole lot of people that are in collective bargaining agreements. In the stores in Pacifica, I don't know about Rite Aid, but Safeway is collective bargaining. So. I've, this is a very tough situation, exactly as, as councilmember Vavlos said. It feels to me like. We want to do this because we want, we care about the people, the people who work in the grocery stores. And that served us all the way through the pandemic when no one could get toilet paper. When no one knew anything and they showed up, they showed up to work every day. And we know they showed up because why? When we went to the grocery store, there they were serving us. So does anyone disagree with the notion that they deserve it? Well, probably Safeway and their board, I would say probably do. But. That's a, from my point of view, we have to as a council, think about our city. And our city finances and our responsibility to manage the city. And to keep ourselves out of harms way as much as possible. And when I'm looking at the, you know, Daily City has been sued. Morrison and Forster is the lawsuit, is the law, is the law firm representing this, the California Grocers Association. And I hate to be going, oh, I'm afraid they're so big, but the truth of the matter is they're so big. And their litigation department, they, they could go on forever. And I don't think Pacifica would be exempt, in fact, I think we'd be easy pickings. So there's that point. And that's sort of putting the. Value and worth of people putting themselves at risk on behalf of the community against, again, money. And the lawsuit potential, et cetera. We've had a couple of things happen in the city that we had to make decisions based on lawsuit. Or the risk of lawsuit, one of which is our district elections. I don't think it was, you know, our idea per se. And it was truly a litigation risk that was the biggest factor and the advice of council. So those are the uncomfortable unfortunate things that council members have to do when they sit in these chairs. And I find it distasteful in the extreme. My concern is. Separating our emotional desire to support our coworkers in this town. From. Our risk. And our financial exposure. And the issue of, we're in the yellow tier at this point. It's already May. In terms of retroactivity, the most retroactive we could go is back to tonight potentially. Otherwise, I'm not sure we're, you know, if we're talking about, it has to be proscriptive and move forward. We're, we're talking the day before. The governor's action, which we don't know what that's gonna be yet. So these are all the issues that have been swirling through my mind, not to mention the fact that, you know. I'm a union member myself. And I would like to not have to think about these other aspects. But I cannot in good conscience ignore them. I at least have to put them on the table and look at them. And, you know, this council needs to face it as a conscious decision that we're doing that, not focus on. The emotional aspect of taking care of people. And, you know, perhaps there's another way. The strongly worded letter to the, you know, to the leadership of Safeway, I don't know how far that would really go. But, you know, I don't know if there's some, like, to the point that councilmember Vavlos made about. There are a lot of heroes in this town who did, you know, recology is one of them. Who served continuously and, you know. There's, I feel like there's a lot, you know, medical workers, there's a lot of heroes, our own city staff. And so.
Those places have provided hazard pay for their employees. And I think that's the point is that Safeway hasn't, right, not in Pacifica. And so we're talking about the grocery stores tonight, we're not talking about all the other stores or all the other. Places, we're talking about the grocery store only. And I think it's super important that we put people before money. And that, emotional or not, I think we should put people before money. And I understand where, I understand what you are saying, it's not like I don't, I hear you loud and clear. But I'm definitely going to say that we need to put people before money.
I Googled, cause you had asked the question about Rite Aid being. Union or not, so I was curious to see if they had a collective bargaining agreement because that was the concern, one of the concerns you had. And here's an article, January seventeenth, twenty twenty. Northern California Rite Aid workers vote to reject the company's offer by ninety one percent. And the reason was the company's proposal, which it released after, which it released after announcing the largest quarterly revenue gain in ten years. Eliminated existing medical benefits for new employees and retirees leaving scores without medical coverage. And that's, that was January twenty twenty. But, you know, I'm sorry, but they should, I just feel that everybody in the United States should be entitled to medical care. And they're, you know. Yeah, so I mean, that's my thought, I think it should be a hazardous hazard ordinance. And if not, maybe I think we should go for at least a local ordinance and try and figure out some findings for that. So I'm counting two, two.
I'm wondering what the terms would be if we go forward with this? What realistically could they be?
Ninety days.
An emotional vote, it makes us fall on the good side, on the right side, on the people's side. But what is the, what is the actual mass, you know, amount of money, amount of, you know, we can't go retroactive. How far forward can we go, what findings are there when we have seventy something percent of San Mateo County vaccinated? Those eligible to be vaccinated? You know, how do we justify it and how, in a way that fends off? The potential for legal action? That is a question for the city attorney. And of course, we probably don't want to discuss every detail of it because, you know, it's a legal matter, potentially.
Yeah, I'm not sure you want me to, I'm not sure where to go with that question. But I, I'm prepared to answer. Other more specific questions, but that one, I think that really is a question for the council to answer.
An exception for collective bargaining agreements means. What, taking those covered by collective bargaining?
Yes, it would, it would not apply to those with collective bargaining agreements. So that is something that, that the council may want to, to figure out. Because even with the, the quote that for, for the Rite Aid that council member O'Neal brought up. That to me, that sounded like they would rejected a proposal, not that they are not part of a collective bargaining agreement. So it could be that both Safeway and Rite Aid are subject to collective bargaining agreements. And if so, then if we add a provision that said all those. Except for those in collective bargaining agreements. It might not apply to any of the businesses that you were trying to target with the ordinance. So that is something that is very important that we, that we get clarity on either. You know, I, I, we can't get clarity tonight on that, but that's something that, that has got to be answered. Because the council wouldn't want to adopt an ordinance and subject itself to litigation. If it's not going to apply to.
Anybody.
Anybody.
Be a unique ordinance, it's unique, you know. Is what it would be.
Yeah, if we, that, that can't even be, that can't even be part of it because then we don't, yeah, that just.
That, that can't even be, that can't even be part of it, because then we don't, yeah, that just like negates the whole thing.
Yeah.
So I, I'm, I don't know what else I can say.
So it sounds like. The, the decision is. To take the risk of litigation.
Oh, it's two, two.
Yeah.
To do nothing. So no action is taken, no direction is given to, into staff or council.
Correct. I mean, if there, if, if there's no further discussion. Then I think staff has the direction that there's no action for us to take, no further action, because we don't have a majority. Not even a. Super majority, but just a, a majority of direction to staff. At least I'm not hearing any. I don't think the city manager is. So at this point, without. More clear direction from three of you. There's. We will not be bringing back an urgency hazard pay ordinance.
Can we look into the collective bargaining issue for our next meeting? Whether. Everybody has the collective bargaining units or not?
You mean, because if that item would. Didn't apply, it would, it would not negate the ordinance, the way we were just saying.
Well.
Of doing the ordinance would be.
If, if everyone is in a collective bargaining unit. Then. Then regardless, there would be no use in doing an ordinance.
So you, you want information on that?
I would like information on that. It's, it's only.
Is Rite Aid. Covered by collective bargaining or a union and it said, United Food Culinary Workers Number Eight is central in Northern California. So I think it's pretty safe to assume both Rite Aid and Safeway are union. We can check and have staff bring it back, you know.
But well, and for, for what it's worth, although I have not done specific research, and I, I, I believe that both Rite Aid. And Safeway do have collective bargaining. I'm not, I'm not absolutely certain with Safeway's in Pacifica, but. I, I think it, it may be safe to come to that assumption without doing further research. So I think the, the question, Madam Mayor, still is. As the presiding officer, you can, you can decide when the discussion has. And do you want to call the question, or do you want to say? I, I don't hear a, a majority consensus on bringing this back as an urgency ordinance. So we are going to move on to item 11.
I don't hear this being a majority approval, and therefore I don't think that we should. Continue this conversation and council is not requesting that staff and city attorney bring back. An emergency ordinance, urgency ordinance on hazard pay for grocery workers. So that is the unfortunate conclusion of that item, and I would like to take. Five minute break. Seven. Subject, Adopt a Resolution: Adopting an Administrative Policy. Display of Flags at City Facilities. That establishes clear guidelines regarding the display of flags at city facilities. Recommended action. Adopt a resolution. Adopting the administrative policy, display of flags at, at city facilities. Oh, it's the same thing. And that's the recommended action. And we have a presentation from City Manager Woodhouse.
Thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer, Mayor Protem Beer, and City Council Members, Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. The mayor had requested this item be agendized for tonight's meeting to allow, if the policy is approved by the council. The display of the LGBTQ flag, and I add in the report. You know, the questioning intersex allied asexual, aromantic, agender, or IA. Addition to that, because that's becoming one of the, one of the phrases and groups of the community. And also known as the rainbow flag or pride flag at City Hall and on Beach Boulevard, if passed in the policy. But in order to accommodate this. It's necessary to have a flag policy. And on short order, what staff did is, is really threw together. A really core, basic flag policy. And what, what a flag policy does is it. Addresses the main provisions and protocols relating to the flying of flags, to the half-staffing of flags. And then to add a section related to ceremonial flags, in this case, the pride flag. So that's the basics of the policy that you have before you. Flag policy can be a complicated topic, it can be involved. And if the council is interested in additional provisions to this policy. What I would recommend is that the adoption of this, this core policy. And then to, at some point in the future, when there's more council discussion time, as well as more staff research time that can go into it. To, you know, bring additional provisions in the future. But, because, because it can take a while to put that together. And actually, we, we sort of had that on our. You know, docket for later in this fiscal year to try to get a flag policy adopted, because the city has never had one and. It's a good idea to have one. So. That's the summation of what you have before you, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Mike and Sue both have their hands up.
Okay, I don't know who had their hand up first.
Mike.
Kevin, I just noticed in, in the actual policy that we have written. It specifically mentions only the pride flag. And I just did a quick, quick search and I noticed there's like 12 commemorative. Fifteen commemorative, you know, events that people have flags for, you know. There's a Jewish, Irish, Asian, and numerous others there. Would each of those have to have a city council resolution to fly the flag if we, if it's requested? So what we're approving specifically is the pride flag tonight and the. You know, half-staff and all that. But if, if anybody wants, else wants to have a flag, each, one would require a city council resolution?
No, what's being proposed is that this policy would just allow the flying every June of the pride flag. As, as I mentioned in my introduction, if the council wanted to open the conversation to. Further provisions and, and other commemoratives ceremonial flags, I would suggest that as a future conversation, because that's what. Gets more complicated about how you define what qualifies as. In the, in the sentiment of the city council, on behalf of the city, to be a ceremonial flag to be flown. And, you know, there's other provisions related to staff resource impacts that we would have to, you know, research and make sure we're providing the right financial impact about. You know, raising and lowering flags in different months and things like that, but. So again, sort of the simple, basic policy with just the pride flag as the ceremonial flag vetted. And if you wanted to fly different flags in the future, you ideally should revise the policy before doing so.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, if I could just clarify. Madam Mayor, that, that question from Councilmember O'Neill. I, I want to make clear for the council that what we're trying to do, because it's very important that we are creating a very limited. Public forum for flags. And that is important, because if we don't. Then it means that anybody who wants to put up a flag will have the opportunity. Regardless of what the city may want flown or may not want flown. So at this point, we are asking the council to adopt. A policy that is very narrow, because we want to make sure that the policy that the council adopts maintains that limited public forum status. So that would be my strong recommendation as your first step in adopting a flag policy. After we have this in place and we see how it operates. Then we can come back and perhaps expand it or, or make other revisions. But this would be my strong recommendation on, on a very good place to start on a flag policy.
Thank you. Councilmember Vado lost?
I was gonna pretty much ask the same question. What if anybody wants to put up a flag or this group or that group and we could have. It constantly, which would be okay. As long as, as we can approve it, but I understand. Doing the ordinance sometime later and just limiting this for, for right now, for expediency for the June time period. Thanks.
Thank you. Other council comments or questions? I don't see any. Let's open public comment. Deputy City Clerk?
I will bring up a public comment. Watching for any hands raised. Okay, we will start with Leland Anders. Have allowed you to unmute yourself, Leland Anders.
Thank you. My name is Leland Anders and my pronouns are they, them, theirs. I'm here tonight as a member of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. And I just want to applaud you all for developing the administrative policy, allowing the pride flag to be displayed during the month of June. Last year, it was my honor to work with the Foster City City Council, who adopted a similar policy and resolution to fly the pride flag by a vote of three to two. And I'm, I'm very happy to report that the Foster City was unanimous in their vote to fly the pride flag this year. It might seem like raising the pride flag is a small gesture. But it has a very big impact, because it shows your residents, local businesses, and all those visiting the beautiful city of Pacifica. That you value inclusion for the LGBTQ community and for everyone. So thank you in advance for your support of this important resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other hands raised at this time for item number 11? The next speaker we'll have is Jenny Walter, followed by Juliana Garcia. Jenny Walter, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just want to say thank you again. I'm Jenny Walter with Coast Pride. My pronouns are she, her, and hers. And I wanted to echo what Leland Anders said. And just thank you from the bottom of my heart. You're definitely signaling to the world, to visitors and to residents alike. That you value inclusion and, and we value all of you and hope that you join us on June 1st at our opening. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next we'll have Juliana Garcia.
Thank you. My name is Juliana Garcia. My pronouns are she and her. I'm also Commissioner on the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. I wanted to share with the City Council of Pacifica more about the importance of having language that allows your city to raise the LGBTQ. that allows your city to raise the LGBTQ pride flag as part of your Pride Month activations. I am a resident of East Palo Alto. And last year, it was a challenge for my city to raise a pride flag for June, because we did not have language in place to allow our city hall, a county-owned building, to do a flag raising. Our city had no flag policy, and we were challenged by the fact that we do not control the facilities of our own city hall. This year, however, our LGBTQ Commission worked with the County of San Mateo to include language in its own Pride Month proclamation to authorize the Progress Pride Flag to be raised at any location under the ownership or control of the county. I'm so proud to say that just today, East Palo Alto raised, for the first time ever, the Progress Pride Flag at our city hall. This is such an impactful, highly visible action taken by our city to show its support of the LGBTQ plus community. Now that the Pacifica City Council is considering language that would allow your city to take similar action and have this significant impact to its LGBTQ residents, I hope this example will help highlight just how important it is to have language in place to allow your city to do so. I'm hopeful that Pacifica's flag raising policy will be approved, and look forward to seeing the Progress Pride Flag raised to celebrate Pride Month soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Reverend Terry. Reverend Terry?
Hi, I just want to, Terry Eckelberger. I live in Pacifica. I just want to remind the council that Coast Pride is happy to give you a new flag to put up the poll, and thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I don't see any other. Oh, I see one more hand raised. Tanya Beat. Go ahead, Tanya, with your comments.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Tanya Beat. My pronouns are she, her. And I actually work for the county. I'm the Director of the LGBTQ Commission, as well as the Commission on the Status of Women. And I just want to thank the City of Pacifica for supporting the LGBTQ community beyond just the proclamation and a potential flag raising this year. You know, I work with the county libraries, and I know that both Pacifica libraries have been very supportive of inclusive programming. And just, there are businesses and nonprofits in Pacifica that are allies or LGBTQ owned. And so I know it would be very important for the residents to see a pride flag flown this year, not to mention the impact it has on the mental health of our youth. The Trevor Project just conducted a national survey of 35,000 LGBTQ young people between the ages of 12 and 24. And they found a lot of discouraging information from the impact of COVID. But one of the things that was interesting to me was, they found only one in three LGBTQ youth found their home to be LGBTQ-affirming. And that LGBTQ youth who had access to spaces that affirmed their sexual orientation and gender identity reported lower rates of attempting suicide than those who did not. So at the end of the day, these youth were also asked, what brought them joy? And here are some of the things they said. Affirming parents, LGBTQ support in school, feeling seen, learning more about LGBTQ history, and seeing rainbow flags and stickers in public. So while I understand that you're trying to navigate the politics of having a flag policy, I do want you to know that your decision does have impact, and we know that you do support LGBTQ community. So I just wanted to thank you for your support, and please let us know how we can support you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Beckmeyer, I don't see any more hands raised at this time.
All right, then, we'll close public comment. Back to council.
I'd like to make a motion, please, to adopt a resolution adopting an administrative policy, display of flags at city facilities, that establishes clear guidance regarding the display of flags at city facilities.
Councilmember Big Stick?
I'll be happy to second that motion, but I'd also like to make a little comment before we vote, if I may.
Sure. And with the motion and the second, we can have discussion. Go ahead.
So, pardon me, as I take a moment to be quasi-verbous, but I got to miss out on the last one, so I wanted to tell a story or two. It's not often my storyteller part has been able to show itself on this stage. But first of all, you know, there's this nomenclature in the ordinance specifically, the city's flag polls are not intended to serve as a forum for free expression by the public. And when I read that initially, it was kind of counterintuitive. But frankly, I didn't think we'd be having this discussion tonight based on our council goal-setting session to begin with. So I was delighted that we had this opportunity. And what I love about that nomenclature in the ordinance is that it makes very clear that what we are doing unite as a council is saying this is an expression of the city. And later on, when we have time and resources to discuss what the policy is, that may or may not be an outlet for public expression later, we'll have that time later. And right now, that's not what this is. But we are declaring as a city our values. And this is really an important one. So the two short stories I have before we vote, you know, when I was walking around campaigning, one of the doors I knock on, one of the ladies opens it and tells me her story about how, due to some of the members of the community, she actually felt kind of afraid to be who she is in our community. And again, you know, I have a background of family members, you know, let alone friends. And it's, in my community, I immediately, you know, felt this repugnance. And no, 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 this is a place where we ought first and foremost to be accepting. And to those who don't feel that way, you know, I would posit to you, the reason why we must be accepting is because it makes it, at the end of the day, a better community for all of us to live in. You know, regardless of what your head might tell you in this moment, you're going to feel better if the people around you feel safe. You're going to feel safer too. But anyway, you know, it's heartening to me that some of the members of our community are immediately going to feel safer about this. And then my other story is a bit more personal. And, you know, I mentioned my family, and I know they may or may not like the idea of being outed, so I'm not going to get specific about who's who and what's what. But I will tell you that one of the stories passed to me by my mother about my grandmother, my grandmother, who was a mother of four children. My mother, you know, with pride, has recounted stories of how my grandmother in the 60s would march for gay rights. And that's kind of a part of my origin story, is, you know, I come from a family, you know, in which my grandmother was as close as she could be a pioneer and an ally in that time, when folks were fighting for their rights. One might argue with even more necessity of veracity than they are today. So that I get to vote in favor of this ordinance tonight means a great deal for me on a very personal level. And with that, I'll shut up and we can all vote. Thank you.
So this item number 11 was moved by Mayor Pro Tem Beer, with a second by Councilmember Big Stick. I'll do the roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Butterlos?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer?
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Yes.
And item number 11 passes with a vote of five to zero.
Thank you very much. And our last item is item 12, which is a fiscal year 2020-21 Preliminary General Fund and Other Funds Budget Discussion. The recommended action is to review and discuss the fiscal year 2020-21 Preliminary General Fund and Other Funds Budget and provide additional policy direction on the desired strategies for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, relief funds for the coming fiscal year 2021-22 budget. We have a presentation by a few staff members. City Manager Kevin Woodhouse, Assistant City Manager and Planning Director Tina Wermeyerster, and Chief Financial Sustainability Officer Yulia Carter.
Great, thank you, Mayor Beckmeyer. Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I will, once again, I'll kick this off tonight, and then turn it over to Ms. Carter, I believe, first, and then Ms. Wermeyerster in the presentation. We're at another milestone in this fairly complex budget development process this year. And as you'll hear, you know, one of the complexities is factoring in the American Rescue Plan Act funding strategy into this budget, in addition to handling the impacts from COVID, the revenue losses that we've experienced. Next slide, please. What we want to cover tonight is first, talk about some changes that have been made to the 21-22 base budget assumptions since we last reported to you two weeks ago on the base budget. And then cover what some of the preliminary budget recommendations include. And you'll see on those preliminary budget recommendations, those don't include the ARPA or the capital program, because we'll cover those separately in this presentation. So then we'll next move into the capital improvement program. This discussion tonight is not intended to dive deep into the CIT, because we will pick that up again at the special meeting we're intending for June 1st on budget. We will then talk about projected fund balances across all funds, and then dive into and talk more about the ARPA budget strategies being recommended. And when we do get to that point, I really want to emphasize, one of the challenges is we don't have all the information from the state related to their process and timing of the distribution of the ARPA funds. Because for smaller cities like ours, the funds flow through the state and not directly from the federal treasury. We do have the treasury guidelines. Unfortunately, they're more complex than, you know, we all maybe hoped they would be. But we're doing our best and working within what we think are the appropriate guidelines in the recommendations we're making. And the ARPA use of funds extends over several years. I believe the deadline is December of 2024, when those need to be expended. So this will be an ongoing strategy. But we need to arrive at some strategies and numbers in order to adopt the, you know, balanced budget for this year. So I'll stop there and turn it over to Ms. Carter.
Thank you, Kevin. Next slide, please. So since the last meeting, we've made few adjustments and changes to the base budget. All of this is listed here on this slide. First of all, we revised our estimates for business license tax, increased it by about $28,000 to a little bit under $500,000. And this is based on the recent financial projections that we received from our tax consultant, HDL. We also incorporated revenue estimates of about $2.5 million for the Access Educational Renewation Fund, also known as ERAF. And we added these allocations to these three funds as listed on the slide. We split it based on what was previously discussed with the council. $88,000 of it goes to general fund, for allocation to nonprofit organizations. $1.5 million is intended to cover Civic Center renovation project, as discussed at the previous meetings. And the remainder of the allocation is going to disaster accounting fund, again, consistent with the previously approved policy direction of the council. We also made few adjustments to the Internal Service Fund allocation to account for the workers' compensation expenditures in the fund. We also increased the wastewater fund allocation to the general fund, as we discussed at the last council meeting. We also built some inter-fund transfers to account for debt service payments all over, across all funds, and added additional $300,000 to the future debt service payment on the Civic Center project financing. Again, as you may remember this presentation from a few meetings before, we received this estimate from the council. We made some miscellaneous adjustments in Public Works and Forest Department, so those were missed during the base budget presentation. So we restored some of the part-time staffing and equipment replacement budget in these departments. And finally, we built the $3 million transfer from general fund to general capital fund to fund the Civic Center project, again, as we discussed in the trial meetings. Next slide. This slide shows the preliminary list of new programs that the city manager recommends that we include in the budget. The list, again, keep in mind that this list does not include the ARPA-funded programs and projects or capital projects. And we will discuss this a little bit later in this presentation. But on this list, we included funding of the fuel reduction project in the Bellmar area, funded by CalFire Grant of $118,000, with the city's local match of $25,000. We added just minor allocation for the Economic Development Program for the city's Sustainable Food Service where organs modification and continuation of the street banner program. We also included the location for the cost allocation plan, user fee, and development impact fee. That's the study. If you may remember, the last council meeting, we discussed that the last cost allocation plan was prepared in 2013, which was probably based on the fiscal year 2011-12 budget, or maybe even the year before, which makes this plan about nine, 10 years old. And municipal best practices guidelines recommend that the cities do this kind of study every five years. And the cost allocation model should be used as a basis for this review. So we recommend that we take this project over in the upcoming year. And the last two bullets include ongoing contract for Arbor Services. The city Arborists recently retired, so contracting the services would be the most efficient way to deliver the services in the upcoming year. And similar to this, ongoing street light LED program will help to fund replacement schedule for the street lights. Next slide. Now, let's briefly talk about capital improvement program. As the city manager mentioned, the fiscal year 21-22 CIP program budget will be discussed at the next council meeting, at the budget study session. But we did include the recommended CIP program options tonight for you, just for the purpose of giving you a full picture of the city's financial position and available resources that include capital transfers that are necessary to fund the CIP program. So the program is listed, the list of projects is included in your reports as attachment two. You can see that the program is budgeted at $26 million. But again, keep in mind that this includes all the outside grants, reimbursements, and partial borrowing on the Civic Center project. There are 60 CIP projects on the list, seven of them are new, and 26 of them are related to wastewater fund projects. And as I mentioned before, general fund contribution towards CIP is limited to just $3 million this year for the Civic Center project, which means that general capital fund reserves is being used mostly to fund all the rest of the general type of CIP projects. And again, as we mentioned before, CIP program and specifics on each individual project will be discussed in detail at the next budget study session. will be discussed in detail at the next budget study session. Next slide. Now let's quickly take a look at other funds. The city currently has 26 different funds that are grouped in these categories. We already spent quite a bit of time at the last meeting and a little bit today talking about general fund, and we will dive into the general fund balances in greater detail in the future meetings. But as you know, general fund is our primary operating fund that provides general services and day-to-day operations and activities for the city. The enterprise funds characterize operations that are run like business. In our case of Pacifica, we are talking about wastewater fund and beach parking. The special revenue funds restricted either internally or externally for certain specific purposes. The examples of this funds would be gas tax, Measure A, impact fees, and capital project funds. So when you look at the special revenue funds, well, most of our capital allocations are presented here. Internal service funds represent internal business services provided by one department to other departments, and it's usually done on cost reimbursement basis. Again, examples of those funds would be motor pool, employee benefits, risk management, like workers' compensation, and channel liability funds. Debt service funds are used for paying obviously debt service obligations, loans, bonds, and again, all individual funds and projected fund balances are presented in your attachment on to your staff reports. So you can see all 26 funds of them. And once again, I just want to emphasize that the schedule will come back to you when we're ready to bring you the proposed budget for adoption. So there might be some changes in the schedule as we go along with this project. Next slide. Well, with that, as we are moving to American Rescue Plan discussion, I just want to turn it over to our Assistant City Manager. Tina, unless you have any questions for me at this point.
If there's no questions, I'll go ahead and proceed with the presentation. My name is Tina Wermeyerster, Assistant City Manager and Planning Director.
I think. I think.
Oh, sorry.
We can get, I can ask it later. It has to do with the the structural deficit and the change in the amount up and down and where we landed. So either we talk about that now if you like, or we can address all those kind of questions at the end.
I suggest we continue with the presentation because the question might be answered as we go along.
Thank you. Sorry. Go ahead, please.
No problem. So I'm going to review the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA, and the recommendations for use of those funds. So in March, Congress passed this act, which included 19.5 billion for cities with a population less than 50,000. These smaller cities are also known as non-entitlement cities in some of the literature you might read about the act. And of course, there were many other billions of dollars allocated to states, tribes, counties, and other larger cities as well. This influx of capital is available to replace lost public sector revenue to strengthen a support for vital public services and help retain jobs. Other qualified uses of funds include support of ongoing COVID-19 response efforts, economic stabilization for households and businesses, and premium pay for essential workers, and also specified infrastructure improvements. And I put in, put in this slide in parentheses, allowable use of funds for any type of government unit because these, this list is for not only smaller cities but also states and counties. And so something like public health expenditures may not be on our list, but there's certainly something that states and counties can use this funding for. Next slide, please. So during the April 12th narrative budget meeting, the council concurred with the budget strategies that are shown on this slide for use of ARPA funding. These include compliance with treasury guidelines, following sound municipal government financing principles, replenishing lost revenue impacted by the pandemic and reimburse pandemic-related expenditures, provide grant funding to local small businesses if necessary beyond other ARPA funding that may be available for small businesses, and invest in studies, projects, and limited-term staff to address housing and homelessness challenge exacerbate, challenges exacerbated by the pandemic, and stimulate the local economy to improve the city's tax revenues. Next slide. So with this, this table, I'll go ahead and explain that. But first, I wanted to say that the preliminary ARPA allocation estimate for Pacifica is 7.2 million. The U.S. Treasury Department's published formula, using that formula, Pacifica's anticipated lost revenue for the reporting period is 14.6 million, including the current and anticipated vehicle license fee revenue shortfall. And if we remove VLF shortfall, the anticipated revenue loss is 8.2 million. So still, either way, the shortfall is more than the city's preliminary ARPA allocation estimate. So the city manager's preliminary recommendation is to recognize ARPA funds in the general fund as revenue to address the significant loss in revenues since the beginning of the pandemic and maintain stable and sustainable core city services. And so what you see on this table is that without ARPA funds, the city would face a $1.9 million deficit next fiscal year that could require reduction in services and staff. So after factoring in the ARPA apportionment, the city would have some remaining ARPA funds this next year available for allowed uses. And we'll go over those in the next slide. But before we move on, I wanted to just direct your attention to kind of the middle of the table where you see the line that says structural surplus slash deficit. And you see that with no ARPA, that's 1.9 million. And then when you factor in three scenarios for ARPA funding, we wanted to provide you the first tranche estimate that we have is 3.6 million. But just in case it's less, we went ahead and gave a conservative and a midpoint estimate. And so after you backfill for lost revenues and cover the 1.9, we're expecting, in the best-case scenario, to have 1.6 million available for ARPA-related programs. Next slide, please. So this slide summarizes the city manager's preliminary recommendations for the remaining ARPA funds in this first tranche allocation. These include economic initiatives focused on business assistance and retention and strategic economic recovery planning, including city contribution to existing small business grant programs and funding for tourism marketing program developed in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce and other stakeholders. We're anticipating that this could, an allocation could be $250,000 to this effort. Initiatives to address homelessness, including community conversations regarding homelessness, which was an identified council priority project this year, and assistance for vehically housed individuals such as a potential dumping station or a financial contribution to a suitable safe parking site. We identified $170,000 for this. Covering continued costs associated with COVID prevention. These include additional cleaning and sanitation at city facilities and PPEs. We anticipated $120,000. This may decrease as health requirements are modified in the future. A limited-term staffing augmentation to assist with implementation of the ARPA qualified initiatives and related programs. This is estimated to be just over $500,000 annually. These would include a limited-term, two-year limited-term planner to provide needed staffing assistance to work on a variety of projects, including expediting housing projects, such as the workforce housing project on Oddstad and other business or housing-related development projects. A two-year limited-term public works project manager will assist in economic recovery by increasing bandwidth to process applications and expedite projects, and will also take some management, some project management load off of field services staff. And then a two-year limited-term position to assist both the city clerk and human resources. This past year saw almost continuous changes to state regulations related to workplace safety and leave requirements, which place a significant strain on human resources and the ability to provide efficient day-to-day internal services to all the departments. The city clerk's office is currently and will continue to experience additional staffing needs related to protocols for public meetings and has experienced an increase in Public Records Act requests, which in part can be attributed to the closed facilities in compliance with COVID protocols. We also have identified improvements and modernization ventilation systems to prevent airborne diseases as a qualified expense. And we have estimated $680,000. And then infrastructure projects as specified within the act, including stormwater and pollution prevention reduction improvements that Public Works has programmed addressing San Pedro Creek pollution and a monitoring plan and best management plan to reduce pollution. It's just one of them. And we have identified $250,000 for that effort. So the items I just listed total 1.97 million, which is more than would be available this year after addressing the structural deficit. However, some of the funds may not be needed exactly in this fiscal year, such as the ventilation systems maybe rolled over into the next fiscal year. Next slide. Next slide. I think we're missing a slide, but that's okay. As a city manager, oh, here it is. As the city manager seeking initial feedback on the uses of ARPA funding, you know, actual available funds and staff's final recommendation will be contingent on the final ARPA allocation and any further clarification of guidelines. For the council's discussion this evening, some important factors and best practices to keep in mind are that the ARPA funds will be dispersed into tranches 12 months apart, and the funds must be obligated or used by December 2024. Jurisdictions have the ability to use funding for pressing needs, but should also retain the ability to program funds in future fiscal years to address future funding shortfalls for basic services and to address the particular COVID response needs of the community as those will likely also continue to evolve. So more information will continue to become available regarding other funding sources for strategic initiatives such as business support programs or infrastructure, just to name a couple of examples. So as a best practice, ARPA funds should be directed to qualified expenses in the future that do not have other funding sources that may be developed. And next slide. With that, that concludes our presentation. Here we have a schedule and next steps. We're here at May 24th, and you will see that June 1st is the special session for budget. And then we have public hearings and budget adoption in June. And we're available to answer your questions.
All right, councilmembers.
Time check.
Time check? Yes, we need a motion to extend the meeting. Thank you, Councilmember Vaterlos.
I'll move to extend the meeting until, until 11:30.
I'll second.
I thought I heard a second by Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Oh, you're seconding? I couldn't hear you. Okay, go ahead.
With the motion by Councilmember Vaterlos and second by Mayor Pro Tem Beer to extend the meeting to 11:30, Councilmember Big Stick.
Yes.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Beer.
Yes.
Mayor Beckmeyer.
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Okay, now questions from council. Tiger Jazz, Big Stick, please go ahead.
Just a really nitpicky but simple one. The schedule said June 24th is when we're adopting the budget. Is that accurate or is it June 28th?
It's June 2028. Thanks for catching that. I know we had that wrong on the previous presentation, too.
Thank you.
Councilmember O'Neill.
On the slide regarding the ARPA funds, you had mentioned business assistance. Have you, are you going to be bringing recommendations for that? Or do you have, or do you have some specifics in mind now?
Well, one of the data points that we have and know about immediately is I believe there are 21 or 22 restaurants that applied through the most recent $10,000 grant-funded program through the county and the foundations. I forget all the entities, Sampita and others that are involved in that. So we know that that need exists and hasn't been filled. But again, there's not a, there's not a specific mechanism that's recommended here. And if councilmembers have input on that, we'd like to hear that. But certainly, that's an immediate one that could be utilized in having that county program administer the distribution to Pacifica restaurants.
And then the two additional employees for 504,000, those are limited terms. So they're not, are they, they're not persible?
They, so they're limited-term positions. They do, they're fully benefited, limited-term, two-year positions. So they do get, they do pay into pers and get pers credit for that time. I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, there was three positions.
Yeah, three.
Oh, the one in planning, one in public works, where was the third one?
A split between the city clerk's office and human resources.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, back to the restaurants. And it seems to me that I know the restaurants, they say, suffered the most, and they got a lot of grants, tons of grants. A lot of other small business, like the bars and the wineries and the, and the gyms, and a lot of other small business didn't have the opportunity to get any grants. So I think we should take that into consideration, too.
Yeah, I know, that's a, that's a great point, Councilmember Vaterlos. I know that the most recent grant program that I referred to related to bars and wineries as well, breweries, breweries and wineries as well as restaurants. But, you know, if the council, again, these are sort of placeholder, and, you know, a program could be developed later. But if you had an indication of like, you know, of X amount of money, you know, 50% should be to eateries or bars and that kind of thing, and 50% to. bars and that kind of thing, and fifty percent to other businesses, we would need to there, there's a lot of federal grant programs that relate to any kind of small business. But we would need to find a, a grant mechanism or, you know, that's, it's a administering the grants to, to uh utilize for those other types of small businesses.
Um, you were there, Kevin, and I believe we had the EDC had the Northern California Small Business Development Association. That that's their job helping um businesses get grants and COVID relief.
Right.
I think it might be worth, I know Yulia is, was hired for economic development as well as budget. And it might be a good entree for her to knock on the doors of businesses and say, I'm here to help you apply for COVID grants or whatever, and introduce herself. Because I think we need to do some outreach, because our businesses do not have a legion of lawyers. You know, helping them fill out the forms.
And, and where are they supposed to find out all that information at Sampita?
The presentation we had at EDC was the Small Business Development Center.
I know, but Mike, that's one small group of people. So it, I'm just saying it, it needs to be broadly put out there so that everyone knows that.
Well, that's what I hear Mike saying. I think you guys are saying the same.
Thought I was saying that, Susan. I'm sorry. I guess I wasn't speaking English.
No, it was you guys were saying the same thing.
Well, there's also money that's going to be going to the uh, the uh Economic Development Committee and the Chamber of Commerce, so maybe they can help. Right?
And I have a question um with regard to Assistant City Manager Wermeyer's statement about unpack a page one fifty-nine. That the totals on that page total one point seven, one point nine seven million. But that's more than the tranche we're going to get this year. And there's some shifting of expenses potentially into next fiscal year, so that's not a problem. So I forgot, I missed the part where it's broken down. I know you said seven point two million, but I don't think I understand the timing of.
Oh, sure. So, so, so the um, the total preliminary ARPA estimate for Pacifica is seven point two million. And it comes in two tranches equal. So the first would be three point six, assuming that's, you know, the number we're going to get. It, it needs to go through the state. The state first needs to get their money from the government. And then they will be able to send it to jurisdictions. And um, and then three po- the other, the second three point six comes twelve months after that allocation.
Okay, and so approximately, the second one comes approximately when?
So let's say we get ours, I don't know, in a couple of months, like say August. Then it'll come theoretically at least August twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so we can budget for it in next year's budget?
Yes.
All right, then I, do other council members have a question? Okay, then I have another question regarding the table on packet page one fifty-eight. And the way that the preliminary budget scenarios were done, that shows a conservative estimate of, of the amount of funds received, I'm thinking, from ARPA. Is that what, when you say conservative, conservative midpoint or full tranche? So it's either a hundred and ninety-seven thousand up to one point six million. That would be remaining for additional ARPA compliant uses this fiscal year or in twenty-two or altogether.
So what this is, what this table is attempting to say is that we have a deficit or showing a deficit, structural deficit of one point nine. And part of the qualified ARPA uses is to backfill lost revenues in order to maintain services, core services. So we're saying take, that's, that's our first recommended, you know, huh, you know, uh very necessary use of ARPA funds. So take that one point nine out of the three point six. And so then what we have left is the one point six in, in, in the full estimate that we have right now. That's seven point two, right? And one.
Best case scenario.
Yes, and we, we decided to provide a midpoint and a conservative scenario. Um, not to confuse you, but just to kind of give you some baseline in case the um, the estimate was uh, you know, not right, we get less.
Thank you. That makes sense. Um, turning to page, packet page one fifty-six. Looking at the, um, this is really maybe a question for Yulia, but for everybody. I just want to underscore that we're looking at our modified base budget and the unassigned fund balance. So the structural deficit of the one point nine five two that's in the middle of that table is the one point nine five two that you were just referring to, Tina, right?
Yes.
And so without the funds, our unassigned fund balance ends up at only a hundred and six thousand, right? That's if we didn't get ARPA money.
That is correct, but I also want to bring your attention to a couple of lines above in the same table where you can see total uh, well, committed, less committed assigned balances. You can see that nine point one million.
Mm-hmm.
So keep in mind that this figure right here includes all the council designations for fund balances like childcare resorts, um, compensate the depth absences and ten percent um operating expenditures.
Okay.
So we will further refine it. Once we have recommendations for you, we will bring a little bit more detailed uh breakdown on all fund balances. But you're absolutely correct. Unassigned fund balances without ARPA funds are getting dangerously low.
Really low, scary low. So I understand and agree with the point of, you know, ARPA funds need to be used for the deficit first, for our own losses. That makes total sense. Um, and with regard to the VLF that we're owed, that isn't included in any of these budgets at this point. Is that right, or is it?
We did not include in this budget that we are going to receive Vila.
So it actually may have this wonderful windfall down the road when the VLF comes, which will just really replenish our um undesignedated and/or our disaster account, probably, or at least a chunk of it would. Um, so the last thing I have to say is, in light of the earlier item on our council agenda that was so difficult and unpleasant, at least for me, um. I talked to the city manager about an idea that I thought was sort of a, like, possibility, depending on ARPA funds. And I, after tonight's council discussion about essential workers and the need to acknowledge them, I want to actually make it a more formal discussion item. And that is the idea of some kind of hero fund, hero award that is administered by whom I don't know, how the applications work, I don't know. But is available for people who are heroes, who wish to apply for it in a big, in a very simple, basic grant form. Um, not unlike the checks that are coming from the state, not unlike the checks that are coming from the federal government. Um, I don't know that absolutely has to be need-based, but that usually makes a lot of sense. But I really feel like, you know, when you consider putting your life at risk, any money you get is sort of a token. And so clearly it would not be, you know, equivalent to what you'd be paid in a, in a payroll kind of form. But it would be something, and it would be an acknowledgement, and it would be available to people who've done jobs that are truly supportive of the community over all this time. And you know, is that for me to decide your job was more essential than my job? No. I think it's a fund that is available for people to apply to with clear, you know, as clear as can be guidelines. And um, it's a hero fund. And there's maybe some, you know, community heroes fund. Maybe there's um some partners like Pacificans Care who could help and work with it. I don't know. But I think setting aside a chunk of funds for something like that, that reinvests in our own community and our own people is something I want to put out as a possible use of the uh, depending on conservative or midpoint or best case scenario, a hundred and ninety-seven to one point six million dollars that is left over from the first tranche. And that's all I have. Councilmember Vaterlos.
First, I'll apologize to Mike. Um, sorry, I, we were saying the same thing, and I misinterpreted. Um, secondly, I think that these two organizations that we donate money to are really great and special in our communities. Um, they do wonderful things. But I'm also wondering if we've ever seen their budgets. Um, to see how things are operating on their side. Um, just out of curiosity, because like I said, they both do incredible things for our community.
You definitely see the budgets for the Resource Center. You might not, but the liaisons for the Resource Center absolutely see the budgets. And when you were talking about that, I thought you were going to say, we should give them more money. And I'm like, yeah, that's what I was thinking. Like, maybe some of this money should actually go to our.
Well, that could be a possibility, too. So.
You know, I just realized we haven't had public comment on this item. We've had council comment. So city clerk, coffee. Can you help me see if we have any public comment?
Yes, um, any members of the public who'd like to speak on this item number twelve? Please raise your hand at this time. Mayor Beckmeyer, I'm not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, closed public comment. And we're back to council. Review and discuss the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one preliminary general fund and other funds budget. Provide additional policy direction on desired strategies for the use of the ARPA funds for the coming fiscal twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Have we done that? Do, what, is there more direction and more information staff needs from us?
Tiger has his hand up.
Tiger, go ahead.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to briefly touch on that hero fund idea that our mayor had. And I think it's a wonderful idea. I don't know um what qualifications look like. Um, but I think that there are definitely a number of people um whom absolutely could benefit. And um, you know, I immediately my mind says, okay, what does the budget look like then? And I'm grateful that that is not my job. But um, I, I think it definitely bears consideration uh by these people we are blessed to have who do do that job to uh maybe come back with an idea of what that would look like. And I think the mayor said um simplicity in terms of who would actually receive that funding is a chunk of that. And um, if there's a simple way to find um those heroes in our community who absolutely need that help. I'm blessed. I don't feel I'm personally one of them, but uh, I, I would imagine there are more than a handful of folks in our community who absolutely could use it. Thank you.
Councilmember Vaterlos.
Um, I, I do agree with that, too. Um, I think that's important for, for the people who worked so hard um keeping us where we were. Um, I had a question about the um ERAF. And you did include ERAF funds in there? Um. Are we sure we're going to get ERAF funds, or was that an estimate? Or is that what we already? Are.
Yeah, that's what we anticipate uh based on the prior year's allocations. So, and we, we didn't get any indication that we are not going to get it. So that's the, um, that's what it's based on.
Okay. But that is a flexible item. We never really know for sure that whether we're going to get those, so.
Well, if something needs to be adjusted, or if you don't receive the full amount, or the amount will be different, we'll factor it into mid-year budget adjustment.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from council? And question to staff, do you feel like you have information enough from our questions and comments?
Yeah, I, I think we do. Um, this is in a iterative process uh as we learn more um about the ARPA funding and as we develop the budget details more. And next week, we'll be back at it again uh in, in talking more about budget. Uh, we will begin to um, you know, check in around with other resources about the, the hero uh community fund kind of concept and see if that exists someplace that we can uh, you know, get some ideas to initiate that discussion. I, I think eventually it will require, and, and again, we don't need to, isn't like maybe development of that fund is not something we need to finish before uh June in defining it. But at some point, we'll need more definition from the council about what the goals are, what the definitions would be for that. Um, but we'll do some initial uh research about it.
Thank you.
Great.
All right, seeing no further comments, I think we'll adjourn the meeting at eleven thirteen PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night, everybody.